Call to order the Aridale County Board of Commissioners, six o'clock regular meeting for Tuesday, July the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Howell to get the invocation for the Board of Commissioners as we seek guidance and wisdom in the work we are about to do for the citizens of Aridale County.
Father, we come to you tonight asking for your continued blessings and ask that you be with all the families, not just in Texas, but nationwide that have been impacted one way or another by the storms, Lord, and lost family members and emergency services workers and all others that are impacted and what they have to see and, you know, rescuing bodies and go from rescue to recovery and the impacts that this has on families and first responders and all, Lord, just be with them and give them guidance and peace, Lord, through their processes. And we thank you for all the many blessings we have in our county. We have a wonderful county. Give us guidance and wisdom in all decisions that we make, Lord. Please pray for our national leaders and state leaders, Lord, and help them to always make the best decisions possible for our citizens, Lord, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
At this time, I would like to ask, if I can talk to this evening, at this time, I would like to ask Vice Chair Neder to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask the county manager, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Chair Conley, we do have one adjustment, and that's the addition of property acquisition under closed session, and that's pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, A five.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the adjusted agenda.
Motion by Vice Chair Neder, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, agenda is approved. Going down our list, we do not have any special presentations or special recognitions or awards this evening, but we do have an appointment before the Board, and I'll turn it over to the county manager to...
Absolutely, thank you. The first item that we have, or actually the only item that we have for appointments before the Board is a request from the Health Department, and that's a presentation of the two thousand and twenty-four State of the County Health Report, and Danica Savage is here to make this presentation to the Board.
Good evening.
My name is Danica Savage, and I am the Health Promotion Coordinator at the Aridale County Health Department. This evening, I will be providing to you all the two thousand and twenty-four State of the County Health Report. All right, so on our first page, we have about this report. So this report contains our community health assessment, which is done every four years, which we selected three priorities. We have our Community Health Improvement Plan, which provides programs in support of those three priorities. And then we have our State of the County Health Report, which provides the progress of the community health assessment and the Community Health Improvement Plan. All right, on page two, we have our Community Health Priorities for two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-six, which are mental health, chronic disease, and substance On page three, we have our Mental Health Initiatives, which provides our initiatives for those four years. Starting off, we have our Teens Mental Health and First Aid, and this is basically an evidence-based program for our high schoolers, which provides them training on how to recognize the actual crisis. We also have our Mental Monday Game Nights, which is in collaboration with our Recreation Center. This is now called Mindful Mondays, and this is where we provide mental health games to our younger population, and this helps with self-awareness and self-esteem. Next, we have our Be Well Aridale, in which we collaborate with United Way, and we collaborate in mental health trainings and different outreach events throughout the community. Page four, we have our Chronic Disease Prevention Initiatives. So we have our Healthy for Life, which is in collaboration with the American Heart Association, and we will be doing this at the end of this year. We will be providing in-person and virtual classes on healthy eating and healthy lifestyles. Next, we have our Aridale Health Diabetes Program, in which we partner with Aridale Memorial, Aridale Health One, and we provide diabetes educational courses, education sessions for those in the community. We also have our Mobile Health Unit, in which we continue to provide health screenings and blood pressure checks. Substance misuse prevention initiatives, we have our Quitline NC, in which we collaborate with our Wellness Clinic, and we collaborate by the Tobacco Cessation Program, and we actually count referrals for this program. We collaborate with the Drug Tape Back with our law enforcement. Last year, they collected about seventeen pounds of prescriptions for the community. We continue to partner with DAKI on their lockbox initiatives, and together, we distributed about three hundred and eighty-three lockboxes and five hundred and twenty-five pouches. So for our two thousand and twenty-four SOP update, we will continue to partner with several different partners to improve in the areas of chronic disease, substance misuse, and mental health. There were no significant changes for morbidity and mortality amongst two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. Page seven, we provide our emergent health issues. In two thousand and twenty-four, flu and respiratory illnesses were at an all-time high. For our ED department, there were one thousand and thirty emergency department visits for the flu, and these factors included low vaccination rates amongst our younger population, vaccine effectiveness, and public gatherings and colder weather. For our substance misuse trends, thirty percent of ED visits in two thousand and twenty-four were overdose-related, and this was, the factors included opioid overdoses, fentanyl contamination, and substance use amongst our adolescents. We did have an increase in homeless population. For our Fifth Street Ministries, there were a long waiting list, and we actually talked to the residents and asked why there was a long waiting list, or why they were actually there, and their responses were rising rent, housing costs, mental health issues, our substance use disorders, and employment challenges. In conclusion, we'll continue to partner with several different organizations amongst Aridale County and continue to improve in those three top priorities. Page nine, we do have our mobile unit, we have our substance misuse toolkit, and we have our Globi animated character, in which I will be providing for you all. Globi is a mood keeper, and he provides support for our younger generation with their feelings and their emotions.
Hi there, I'm Globi, your mood keeper. I'm here to help you understand your feelings and show you how to shine your brightest. When I'm feeling happy, I glow bright yellow like the sun. Sometimes, I feel calm and peaceful and glow a soft, soothing blue. Hey, friend, feeling a little down? Wanna talk about it?
I just had a bad day, and it feels like nothing's going right.
It's okay to feel sad sometimes, but guess what? Bad days don't last forever. Wanna tell me what makes you happy? Like your favorite game or even yummy snack?
My dog. He makes me happy when we play fetch.
See, that's your happy color shining through. So whenever you feel sad, remember your happy place is always waiting for you. Are you ready to explore your emotions with me? Globi, a friend for every feeling.
Along with our video, we also have our Globi coloring books and our Globi plush dolls. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody got any questions or...
I think Globi's a new character added to the collection there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. And with that, do we have a motion to accept this presentation? Motion by Commissioner Howell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes and is accepted. Going down our list, we have two public hearings tonight. I think that's why everybody's here, probably for the most part. I'll turn it back over to the county manager so we can start the first one.
Absolutely, thank you, Chair Conley. Jake Lowman is here with our Planning and Zoning Office, and he's gonna walk you through both rezonings, and the first one is a rezoning request to rezone approximately four point four three six acres along Oswald Amity Road. Jake?
Thank you very much. Good evening to the Board. The first case tonight, like County Manager said, is a rezoning request from RA to General Business on Oswald Amity Road. You can see the parcel outlined in blue on your screen, approximately four and a half acres, and staff does support this request based on the two thousand and forty-five plan designation just across the road, the Employment Center area, that this parcel is in close proximity to other existing non-residential uses and also consistent with the town Troutman's land use plan as well. Troutman had no opposition to this request, and so they support it as well. And walking through, you can see with this request, if approved, the land use designation will change from high-density residential to the Employment Center as requested, just further in alignment with that General Business. The aerial of the site, you can see, it's mostly vacant except for one small house in the north corner. The rest is wooded, brush, and you can see across the street is the church, Baptist Church, and just south and kind of west of the property is an auto shop and a lot of other non-residential uses in the area. Just a couple of pictures of the site, the existing home that's on the property, and on the bottom of the screen, you can see how the brush has grown up on site. And then looking north along Oswald Amity, you see the church across the street, and then looking back south towards twenty-one, the site's on your right. And as mentioned, staff does support the request, and I will answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Jake?
And I will say that the Planning Board recommended unanimously for this, and nobody attended in opposition or support, for that matter, for the case.
Anybody got anything for Jake? Applicant here to speak?
I don't know if I've seen the applicant yet, but they weren't on the sign-in sheet. I talked to them earlier today, they're supposed to be here, but they may not be here yet, so...
Well, since he's not here, I will open up the public hearing in regards to consider a request from landowner applicant Jeffrey Pelkchit of Encased Power LLC to rezone approximately four point four three six acres along Oswald Amity Road. No one has signed up. I would like to ask anyone who is here to speak on this matter. Hearing none and seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask if we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning map and two thousand and forty-five Horizon Plan amendments and to make finding that while said approval is inconsistent with the two thousand and forty-five Horizon Plan, it is still reasonable and in the public interest because the property adjoins an existing Employment Center Industrial Flex Office designation. Property is in close proximity to the other existing non-residential and/or commercial uses, and the request of district is consistent with the Troutman's future land use plans.
Motion by Commissioner Howell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. And now to number two.
Thank you. So the next public hearing that we have this evening is a request to rezone approximately forty acres along Wilkesboro Highway. Mr. Lowman's gonna walk you through this one as well.
So for this request, as mentioned, forty acres, residential agricultural to residential agricultural conditional district at the intersection of one fifteen and Taylor Springs. This, as mentioned, request is conditional based on two things that's been proposed by the applicant. The uses, with all RA uses being allowed, with the addition of a solar energy facility, and the location. Originally, this proposal, when brought to the Planning Department, was one hundred and ninety-two acres. Since the public input meeting, the applicant has revised that plan to simply the forty acres on the west side of one fifteen, so that's the second condition, is to confine that from the parent parcel. You can see the parent parcel on the screen, the portion that is not being considered is in the light blue, the dark blue is what this application is for. And so staff does support this request based on the two thousand and forty-five Horizon Plan, really the agricultural and rural conservation tier one, allowing for this type of utility. Two, that the request is conditional, and so it can be tailored to address the needs of the community, the concerns of the community, and the constraints on site if required. And two, traffic impacts from a solar facility are negligible. And for this, Planning Board did recommend a split vote, recommended approval, but it was five for, not a unanimous approval. So this is a quick view of the two thousand and forty-five plan. You can see that part of the county, very much rural, agricultural, not far from Love Aerials of the site, you can see here, obviously forested and agricultural lands. There is one home on the site you'll be able to see from other pictures. This is the conceptual site plan that the applicant provided with the application. This is not set in stone. As part of a conditional request, there is flexibility to this, so at least the identified solar array areas, they can be moved within the site as long as they do meet the constraints of the ordinance, including, you can see, the five-hundred-foot separation from any adjacent homes, a one-hundred-foot stream buffer, property line setbacks, and obviously floodplain on site that they will stay out of. And the solar arrays are outlined in red here. And again, that's conceptual. So a few quick pictures of the site, the residence that is currently on the highway, and looking south along Wilkesboro Highway, the site's on the right on the bottom picture. Looking across the road, Wilkesboro Highway, intersection of Rupert, and then looking north along Wilkesboro Highway toward Taylor Springs, and then these are views from Taylor Springs Road. One back towards the intersection of one fifteen, you can see the driveway for the nearest residential structure across the road, and then a view looking toward Rocky Creek. And so with that request and our support, I will be glad to answer any questions that the Board has.
Anybody got any questions for Jake? Is applicant here want to speak or...
Yes. Y'all aren't making it easy for me. So yeah, the applicant's here.
It's hot up here.
It is true. Yeah, it's wet.
If you will, just state your name and your address.
Good evening, my name is Monica Paichi, I'm from Finance for Impact. I'm here with my colleague, Sam Littman. Our address is seventy-four hundred West Fourteenth Avenue, Denver, Colorado. I am here today to present the Mahler Family Solar Project, as we call it, a five-megawatt solar installation that represents a strategic partnership between the Mahler Family, Energy United, and Finance for Impact. This project is located at fifty-five ninety-three Wilkesboro Highway and is designed to deliver clean energy while providing substantial community benefits. Let me walk you through this, why this rezoning deserves your approval. This project transforms actually just twenty to thirty acres of the hundred and ninety-two acre Mahler property into clean energy that powers six hundred and seventy-five to seven hundred local homes. What makes it particularly compelling is our twenty-year partnership commitment ensuring long-term energy stability for the community. The project is strategically positioned near existing infrastructure, maximizing efficiency while minimizing impact. Critically, this keeps the property agricultural by preventing large residential development. This is truly a win-win-win solution, benefiting the landowners, the cooperative members, and the broader community. Our partners bring proven credentials. Energy United is North Carolina's largest electric cooperative, ensuring all power benefits their members directly. Finance for Impact and ICAST bring twenty-three years of clean energy experience, including previously a two hundred and fifty million dollar Morgan Stanley Fund. The Mahler family represents six generations of agricultural stewardship. The benefits extend beyond clean energy. Energy-wise, we're delivering stable electricity, pricing through our purchase power agreement, and enhanced grid reliability through local generation that protects against widespread outages like Hurricane Lynn and recent tropical storm Chantel. We are also reducing transmission losses that save money for all Energy United members. For the community, this project prevents uncontrolled residential development, preserves the agricultural character, and supports local farming families. Environmentally, we're producing clean energy while reducing the community's carbon footprint. Our agrivoltalic program actually introduces farming where there was none before while preserving agricultural land use for the future. Over twenty years, this generates significant tax revenue for schools, roads, and emergency services without burdening water and sewer systems, will create local construction jobs and permanent operations positions. The project enhances grid reliability while avoiding expensive infrastructure upgrades, and all power goes directly to Energy United's cooperative members. Let me be clear about what's at stake. This project preserves agricultural heritage by keeping a sixth-generation farm in the family. It prevents overdevelopment by stopping one-hundred-plus unplanned houses from being built. It supports fundamental property rights by letting landowners decide the best use of their property while generating substantial tax revenue and local jobs. And importantly, we're committed to offering ownership to Energy United, our other local entities after the IRS holding period, ensuring this asset remains in the community hands We've exceeded every legal requirement, completed Section eleven point six compliance, satisfied all conditional zoning criteria, and demonstrated consistency with the two thousand and forty-five Horizon Plan. We've thoroughly addressed community concerns through professional safety studies, required setbacks, flood protection measures, and responsive design modifications based on local feedback. The public benefits are clear: stable energy costs countywide, substantial tax revenue, local job creation, and enhanced energy security. The partners, Finance for Impact, ICAST, and Energy United, bring decades of successful community partnerships and proven track records. Thank you for your consideration. This project represents the best use of this land for the community's future. My colleague, Sam Littman, is happy to answer any questions.
Okay. You need to...
Questions?
Anybody got any questions for the applicant? No one has any? I don't think anybody has any, sir.
Oh, okay. I was just here to answer questions right now. I'll formally rebuttal later, I can do a summary later on.
You want to do that during your five minutes during the public hearing, correct?
Yeah, later on, at the end, yeah. Thank you so much.
Okay. Jake, anybody else on the applicant's side to speak?
Those are all two of me.
They're signed up? Okay. Okay, so if that's the case, then I will open up the public hearing to consider the request from landowners of Della White family, represented by applicant Sam Littman of Finance for Impact, to rezone approximately forty acres along Wilkesboro Highway. The first person signed up to speak is Randy Cass. If you will, just state your name and your address.
My name's Randy Cass. I didn't do it. Two-one-eight Burke Farm Loop, Union Grove. Thank y'all for having us speak tonight. I know it's a hard decision, and it's really something that needs to be addressed, but ICAST is here, they're proposing, as you heard, a solar farm in New Hope community, which they're gonna try to convince you that this is a great place to have it, and it's not. It's a wooded area, as Jake showed you pictures of, but what you didn't see was pictures from the other angle. From one fifteen and Taylor Springs Road down, or Cool Brook and one fifteen down, is a hundred and sixty, or a hundred to a sixty, sixty to a one-hundred-foot drop before it even gets. That's according to the topo map of Aridale County. Now, talk about the sixth generation. I'm at least a five-generation right now. I live, my family's on Rupert Road. Go look at Rupert Road, where it's taken, the whole road was Williams Land. So getting into that, local residents, as you can see, supported here with the green shirts, not everyone, but a lot of us, we don't want this. We're happy with our community. We're happy with the way things are. And you hear about the rezoning, it doesn't impact, but it does. It does impact people. People own businesses. I know some of you on the Board do or have owned businesses. If you change something beside your land, does your property value go up or down? Does it stay the same? If something happens that you're trying to leave things for your kids, are the taxes going up or are the taxes going down? Not because of anything you did, because of an outside entity that came in and tried to convince and sell the smokescreen of everything is great, and it's not. They say solar is not green. Well, you know what? I kind of disagree, because I want to say solar is green, because it is toxic, and the color of toxic green is poison. Now, they're gonna tell you it's not. Oh, it's not poison. It is. It can leak toxic chemicals, which we've done, I've done so here and said, from sixty to a hundred-foot drop, it's going into Rocky Creek, our waterways, our children's waterways, our grandchildren's waterways, and that's just not acceptable. You have wildlife that we're looking at, birds, different things that you're going to hear later, I don't really want to get into too much about that, but anybody that knows North Aridale knows it's rural, knows it's farmland. And how does it affect, how does noise, how does different things in the water impact animals? And that's what we're looking at going here. The lease location, it's not conducive, as I said earlier. It's not. If you went up there, and I'm sure you all did, went and did your homework, when you go up and you look at it, they can sell the picture that looks good on here, but go and look at it, it's not. It goes down, it's thick, it's covered, it's wooded, right down to a creek, right behind some of these people's homes that have children that go down and play in this creek. I played in this creek. This is where I spent my life and grew up at. My whole entire life is built right here within a five-mile radius of what we're talking about. And we're wanting to come in, and we're wanting to allow somebody to come from the outside, not local, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter to them. It doesn't matter if it folds. What matters to them is the money. That is all it is. It's not us, it's not you, it's not me, it's not my kids. It's not us, it's not you, it's not me, it's not my kids. And with that being said, when you look at that and you hear the things that are said, I want you to just remember what I'm saying. Green is poison. With a planning board meeting, no question that was asked, they could answer. You're going to see tonight, the community has done their homework, the community has went and really looked and studied this matter. You can go and look at different states, the problem that they are having. The difference is, Iredale County people, as I've said forever and a day, we're smart people. We don't get hung and tied up just because of money. We don't get hung and tied up just because it looks pretty on the outside. Presents look pretty under the tree, but they ain't always what you want. Thank you, that's all I got.
Next person signed up is Leanna Cenaros. If you will, state your name and your address. The person after her will be Isaac Bickford. And if I mispronounce your names, I'm sorry. Just state your name and address, please. And just pull the microphone down, that way we can make sure everybody gets you.
A little bit shorter. My name is Leanna Cenaros, and I live at 298 Rupert Road, so that is near the site. Solar farm considerations. Solar farms are touted as safe and effective by solar panel companies, green climate groups, and certain nonprofits. Like any consideration, it is important to gather facts on non-bias and in most corporate-related businesses. It means following the money. These groups all share a common ideology and are funded through federal subsidies, which in turn causes their findings to be biased. We also need to acknowledge these funds are quickly drying up. We appeal to the commissioners to fairly and objectively assess the well-being and safety of the New Hope community based on facts and reality rather than ideology and special interests. We have real concerns about solar panel farms, including fires, which are common, toxicity, property values decreasing, and water sources drying up. It's imperative to also consider the plethora of experiences that citizens in our communities have faced due to the detrimental effects of solar farms. Some common concerns you hear include noise pollution and disruption of and damage to the environment. Farmland and nearby wildlife impacts are also immense concerns. Solar farms were sold to the public as a solution to green, to clean energy. In reality, numerous harmful effects are produced by the panels to the local communities. Some of these effects are even irreversible. You have solar industry government subsidies, ICAST solar financials, solar panel composition, you have health risk, noise pollution, water, fire, you have ecosystem damage, solar panel repair and maintenance, and land, and decommissioning, sorry. As expected, the loss of federal subsidies is underway. According to the New York Times, the AP, and other news outlets, the EPA canceled $20 billion of funding for climate initiatives on March 11, 2025. Ravi Mahotro, founder and president of ICAST, as well as Triple Bottom Foundation, stated that a loss of federal funding would be a loss of solar farm subsidies in an interview done in January 2025. Per Sam Littman, ICAST, the loss of subsidies, aka federal funding, funding, will result in Iredale County taxpayers, that's us, footing the bill for the cost to develop the land, building the solar panel infrastructure, and installing the solar farms. So that comes back on us. If anything goes south with them, that will come back on us, and you guys, our community, and everybody. Thank you.
Isaac, you're next. State your name and address when you come up, please.
Sure. Isaac Bickford, 163 Privet Farm Lane. Thank you all for allowing us to come and speak tonight. I wanted to speak on the financials of ICAST. What I'm going to demonstrate tonight is that while ICAST may think that the project's going to go forward, financially, they no longer have the ability to make it happen. The previous presenter had mentioned about federal subsidies, I'll go into that a little bit. I'm going to talk about their financial health and then financial markets. All of this information is publicly available, so it's there, the links are there, you guys can go and confirm, I've taken screenshots, so it's there. Next slide, please. So, ICAST money comes primarily from two places. One, from revenue from contracts from state, local, and municipal governments, and then two, from federal grants. So they have an extreme concentration and reliance upon government funding, namely federal government, so up to 95% of their funding. Without that funding, ICAST doesn't exist. Next slide, please. So, as of, as of a couple years ago, or the end of 2023, and some of the executive orders that came down, about $33 million in previously approved grants have currently been frozen and have been frozen indefinitely. Next slide, please. In terms of what recently happened with President Trump's big, beautiful tax bill, this allowed the EPA to essentially to cancel and clawback all of the funding that they gave out. I'm just going to read a couple statements from them. According to the EPA, "When the agency terminated the grants, the funds became unobligated," which is an important idea. "Grantees have desperately formed legal gymnastics to hold tens of billions of taxpayer dollars hostage. In the passage of the one big, beautiful bill, Congress made their intent crystal clear in repealing the program entirely and returning those billions in unobligated funds to the U.S. Treasury." This was the EPA spokesman. In a court filing, the EPA also pointed to comments by Republican Senator Shelley Moore Capito of West Virginia as supportive of the agency's position. He previously stated the bill intended to rescind billions in funding that had been frozen. Right? So right there, President Trump's tax bill rescinded all of the money that was going towards this project. Sam Littman had stated a few months ago that the money that was using, that was being used for this project is North Carolina's, the Solar for All, which is a program under the EPA. North Carolina got $156 million. That money is now gone, as per the recent tax bill. The other major benefit that companies like ICAST need to take advantage of are investment tax credits, right, in order to be a going concern. Additionally, in the big, beautiful tax bill, there are a couple of things that go into how this money is going to be rescinded. One is the idea that any businesses that are doing business with foreign entities of concern, it's a new concept, which is basically anywhere from China, Russia, Iran, and North Korea, is no longer available or no longer able to get investment tax credits. That's a problem for the solar industry. Between 80 and 95% of all solar components come from China, which means, and that the solar industry in China is not, is not possible without Chinese, the Chinese government subsidies, right? So what we have here is an entirely solar manufacturing industry that's relying on these, the entities who are no longer, you can no longer do business with, or you don't get your tax credits, right? This came out two weeks ago, July 4. So the effects of these are still rolling through, but they are now written in law. Next slide, please. Another, another thing that President Trump put into office or put into regulation was that federal governments can now be broken with states and local municipalities if they no longer effectuate the program goals or agency priorities. It is a common, it is common knowledge that President Trump does not like solar. He does not like solar, he does not like wind. And so we can see through his policies that he's clawing these back. And so it is a guarantee, and the EPA has already stated this, that they are going to begin canceling these contracts. And so again, without federal subsidies, without these contracts, ICAST has no revenue. And the sources are there. Next slide, please. Okay. So now getting into how ICAST spends their money. So the majority of their money is spent on program services like setting up, you know, solar farms and running them, managing, and then the rest of them are spent on admin costs. So roughly about $30 million is where their, what their expenses are. At the end of 2023, they had about $300,000 in cash. Now, the problem is, is that this cash came from a line of credit from a bank for about a million dollars. So it's not free cash, it's encumbered by the bank, and they had to pay it back. So all of this means that, that there's no cash, free cash on hand for them to be able to pay the expenses or to pay for projects like this. Next slide, please. Again, going into their assets, right? If you don't have free cash, maybe you can sell some assets. Well, you know, again, their assets, they have $6.5 million or $6.2 million in accounts receivables, that's not cash, you can't pay for accounts receivables. Two and a half, or 2.2 million is going to be disputed under customer disputes. They have another $800,000 in prepaid expenses, which is not cash, and then they have another $400,000 in PP&amp;E, which they would have to sell at a loss if they needed to liquidate for cash. So all of this to say that, that they have, they have a giant hole on their books. The federal money is gone, their contracts are in severe jeopardy, and so there is no money for this project. So now I want to get into, right, so if they can't get federal and they can't get contracts, well then maybe they can get state, right? So let's go to state funding. Next slide, please, okay. North Carolina received $35.4 billion in 2024. We all know that President Trump is trying to cut the budget and is withdrawing state funding, so that funding is going to disappear. Federal funds accounted for just over a third of total state expenditures in North Carolina in 2024, and there was a quote by Governor Stein, "Repealing these credits, i.e. the Inflation Reduction Act credits, will cost the state tens of thousands of jobs by 2030 and billions of dollars in investment that is ready to be made." Stein said Wednesday. He has no plans to cover the hole. He doesn't have the money, right? $30 billion is being withdrawn, there is a giant hole for just general expenses, let alone solar projects like this. There is no money from the state. Next slide, please. So if you can't go to the state, you can't go to the federal government, you go to the financial industry, right? Well, the financial industry only likes solar if you can have it backed by federal government subsidies. As you can see, the largest solar companies in the country, their stocks have crashed, they're down 70, 80% in some instances. There are numerous, there are hundreds of bankruptcies that have happened over the last couple of years, even before Trump's tax bill going into play, withdrawing all of the funding. Next slide, please. So, if we take a look at some of the costs, and one of our neighbors is going to go into this in a little while. The solar project on 115 at about 20 acres is going to cost between $8 and $13.6 million, according to Compare Electricity, which is a think tank. Decommissioning, according to NC State University, is about $278,000 per acre, about $5.5 million, right? So right there, you have almost $20 million in expenses for this project that ICAST does not have money for. The federal money is gone, the state money is gone, their financials internally don't allow for something like this, and, and there's just no money. So, and then there's a slew of Glassdoor reviews for people that do not like the company that have worked there, talked about mismanagement and all kinds of other things, that internally it is just not a well-run organization. It is certainly not an organization that's going to be able to weather the financial storms that are currently happening right now in the solar industry. Next slide, please. So, to sum up, they have millions in solar grants that are currently frozen. They have $22 million in state contracts, federal, state, and local contracts that are in severe jeopardy or in the process of being canceled. They have 1 million in short-term, they have 1 million in short-term bank loans, they have a severe lack of liquid cash assets to pay for expenses, state funding for renewable programs is ending and is not being renewed, financial markets don't like solar, they have a huge amount of expenses to not only stand up, but then eventually decommission this project. So in conclusion, ICAST funds this project almost entirely on funding from federal grants. As of July 4, these funds are no longer being dispersed, and ICAST holds no free cash flow to begin, let alone compete a project of this size.
And Larry Kidd, you give him your five minutes, correct? Okay. Thank you, just to put it on the record. Next person sign up is Billy Burgess, you've relinquished your time to someone else as well, correct?
I did.
Okay. Our next speaker then will be Jason Wood.
No, it's Donna. Donna Galena.
Do what?
Donna Galena. Toxicity.
Okay.
We can do water first, would you like us to do that?
I must have had those out of order, I'm sorry. We had a last minute change.
So Donna Galena?
Yes, please.
Okay, Donna Galena. Name and your address. And everybody, when you come up, you will speak into the microphone that way, because I know that we got it for the record, and there's probably people at home watching as well.
Good evening, Board. My name's Donna Galena, and I live at 171 Bolles Stable Road, and I'm going to speak on the dangers of hazardous materials and EMF radiation that are associated with solar panels. The inside of panels contain several toxic chemicals. The panel company will tell you that it's safely contained with little to no risk to the public. Of course, they will say that. However, there is proof all over the world that solar panels do indeed get damaged, be it by storms, floods, lightning, hail, and decomposition. And when they do, they release toxic chemicals and airborne particles both into the air and into the water supplies. As you see on the maps, this proposed solar plant is less than 500 feet from our water supplies. Inhaling these particles can cause pneumonitis, pulmonary edema, and even death. Extremely hazardous materials are found in all solar panels. These include, but they're not limited to, cadmium, telluride, PVA chemicals, silicon, copper, lead, arsenic, and selenium. These PVAs are forever chemicals, and they have many health effects. There are reproductive effects such as decreased fertility or high blood pressure in pregnant women. These chemicals can have developmental delays in children, low birth weight, accelerated puberty, bone variations, or behavioral changes. They are shown to increase prostate, kidney, and testicular cancers. They can negatively affect immune systems and interfere with our hormones. Forever chemicals increase cholesterol and risk of obesity. All of these are classified as hazardous heavy materials, and to dispose of any of these warrants hazardous waste removal. Solar panels produce 300 times more toxic waste per unit of energy than does nuclear energy. This is according to the Environmental Progress, a Berkeley, California nonprofit organization. The Stuttgard Institute have released studies that show pollutants such as lead and cadmium can be washed out of fragments of solar panels within several months, for example, by rainwater. Many waste centers have no plans to decommission and dispose of solar waste. The Harvard Business Review estimates that by 2035, discarded panels will outweigh new ones sold by two and a half times. The International Renewable Energy Agency estimate that there will be approximately 80 million tons of solar panel waste globally by 2050. I also want to speak on the dangers of EMF radiation that solar panels do emit. And while there are no lifetime safety allowances of radiation, I work in an occupation that measure, measures how much radiation I get. I'm not allowed to wear my dosimeter home, I'm not allowed to leave it in the car, I'm not allowed to carry it in my purse. Why? Because it will measure the radiation that I'm getting outside of my profession. The EMF Academy states that the bottom line is, yes, solar panel systems do ultimately cause an increase in EMF radiation, and there is association between increased exposure to EMF radiation and certain cancers. The world, some of these cancers are, of which leukemia, brain cancer, and acoustic neuromas. The World Health Organization states that more research is needed here. EMFs can also interfere with programmable shunts, the function of pacemakers, and cochlear implants. Don't allow us to be the guinea pigs here. We, the people, are speaking, and you, as our representatives, should use the voice that we have given you as voters to vote against solar panels, not only in Iredale County, but let's take it a step. Let's ban them in North Carolina. Let's ban them in the nation. This is not clean, green energy. Thank you.
Jason Wood. Just state your name and address when you get up here, sir.
My name is Jason Wood. My address, 363 Taylor Springs Road, just up the road from where this is at. I'm licensed as a North Carolina well driller, a member of the Groundwater Association, and water is my thing. So in our first meeting, Mr. Littman didn't know which type of solar panel he was going to use. Either way, just as last lady stated, you know, they've got harmful chemicals in them. Any kind of damage to these, whether it be hailstorms, lightning, tree lambs, whatever, is going to emit the hard chemicals or the heavy chemicals into our water system. As far as Rocky Creek, we've got a flood plain to deal with. As Randy stated, everything running downhill gets into Rocky Creek. Rocky Creek feeds the South Yak and the South Yak and feeds the Yak and all the way out through the coast. And it's up to us to protect what we've got as far as water, not turn it into a science project. But what water is here on this earth has been here since day one, and it's our job to look after and protect it the best we can by emitting heavy chemicals wherever they're at, especially near a creek or down from a creek, in where we need to be. So, yeah. So Rocky Creek is, in the last 10 years, we've seen the 100-year flood, so they claim. This right here is on Morgan Ford Road, or Rupert Road, I think, Morgan Ford, which is just down from this project. Me living on Taylor Springs, where the bridge crosses there at Taylor Springs, I've seen this. There was a log truck out there in the bottom that had actually flooded up over the windows, I think in '20 or '21 in our last flood. But go ahead and play that there. Yeah, that'd be fine. And you can see, I mean, it's high over here on the right, but take a look. So being just outside of a flood plain, you know, this is a potential problem. Does not need to be near Rocket Creek. I don't want to see it anywhere, but dang sure don't need to be near Rocket Creek. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Josh Van Drake.
Sorry. Can we go back to noise pollution with Michelle Beck?
Go back to where?
Noise pollution with Michelle Beck.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Thank you. Also, I apologize for this deck. It worked fine on my laptop. Somehow, it's running over.
Sorry, I'm tall. My name is Michelle Beck, and I live at 167 Coolbrook Road, right at the corner of where the proposed solar panels will go. I'm going to talk a little bit about noise pollution and how that affects the things around us. So the solar panel inverters emit significant sound that disrupt the wildlife. Some animal species rely on frequencies and echoes to avoid obstacles and locate food sources. Noise pollution disorients and causes them to crash into obstacles. Prolonged noise exposure can damage their hearing abilities and make it difficult for them to locate prey. It can also cause them to adjust their call frequencies, affecting their ability to communicate or call for help. For many animals, breeding happens via mating rituals, which usually require particular calls to attract the opposite sex. If the call is low pitched, the sound can get drowned out by other low-frequency noises like vehicle engines and machinery. Some animals may raise their pitch to be heard over the noise, but this corrupts their communication. Some animals rely on their intricate hearing to survive. They use their hearing to locate prey and stay safe from predators. Noise pollution from solar panel construction can disturb these animals and cause them to become disoriented, affecting their ability to stay safe and find food. Animals use distinctive calls to communicate important messages about danger and finding their offspring. Noise pollution disrupts the pitches and intervals of these essential communicative sounds. If animals cannot share important messages with each other, it could affect their ability to bond and stay safe. This is a big thing in our area because there is such important wildlife around us, and we want to preserve that. We want that to stay around us and preserve the animals that we have. I also want to talk about the sound that the solar panels create. So when we asked about this initially, I live, again, right there at the corner, on Coolbrook Road. Back about 11 years ago, my husband Adam and I decided to become foster parents. And we brought into our home a two-year-old boy who is now 12, and he is legally ours. We have adopted him. We have been through numerous therapies, medications, all sorts of things because of the choice that his mother made for using drugs in utero. No fault of his own, but there are things that we deal with. During our therapies, we found that one of the things that really helps him is connecting to the wildlife. Being one-on-one with nature really helps him regulate his emotions and calm himself. I'm sure you know that drug use in utero definitely affects your brain chemistry, and that has been the case for him sadly. We moved to Coolbrook Road so that he had plenty of room to explore, calm himself down, and create a safe space for him. He also gets really disrupted by noises. So we were at the beach last month. We were sitting on a patio. There was some music being played. We had to leave. He was just, we weren't even that close, but he just got too upset. So we got our stuff to go, and we left. It's just one of those things that we, as a family, took on and we deal with, but we are taking that away from him by putting these solar panels there. We were told that it would not make a sound, or it wouldn't be a sound that we could hear. And as we started researching, we found that that is not the case. So I did, maybe, hopefully. I don't know if you can hear. It's a constant noise, a constant hum, and that's going to be in his safe space. So that is a problem that my family is going to incur and something that other people in our area, we have other families with autism, PTSD, tinnitus, all sorts of things that we're going to have to be wondering how that's going to truly affect us, but I know for sure that this will affect my son. And this is something that we are really worried about if this goes through. So we really urge you to consider the location and the safety of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh Van Drake, 326 Prospect Road, North Arleal. Today, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about weather and fire. So everything works great when it's first installed, potentially. But then time comes around, your 20-year-old truck doesn't look like it used to. So we're expecting with the key element of solar is that it needs to be exposed to the sun, but with that, you get exposed to everything else, okay? And one of the top causes of damage to solar projects is lightning. It's a major issue for solar PV farms, causing damage that often requires high replacement and repair costs. We're talking thousands of dollars here, as well as power interruption. Lightning causes premature aging of bypass diodes, power semiconductors, and input and output circuits of data systems, which all have high repair costs when damaged. It also can cause major damage to electronic components and place them out of service immediately. So a lot of people with solar have been hit by lightning. They basically have to start over. Hail also damages solar panels with a company problem with PVA leaching into the environment. As you can see by the, well, actually, that's a map for the lightning. We have about 3,000 to 4,000 lightning strikes in our region per year when it comes to hail. I've got some pictures here. I'm sorry I didn't include into the deck, but basically, you see how big those holes can be. This guy put his Milwaukee Power Drill into the hole. So it's actually a video, and there's a QR code. Should anybody want to snap it and watch the video, feel free to do so. I'll have these available. Let's talk about fire. So one of the things that ICAST will try to jump on is the fact that they are not putting a battery backup system. So there's two different types of solar systems, basically. You have a PV system, which is photovoltaic, and then you have a BEST system, which is a battery energy storage system. So typically, what happens is they stage these things up, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. But what universal fire triggers exist between both photovoltaic and the battery energy storage systems is poor installation due to human error, loose connections that can lead to corrosion in hot joints, faulty equipment, arcing, and overheating due to excess current flow, weather damage, hail, lightning, we just talked about that, water ingress. Got some pictures here. This system is in North Carolina. It's near to the coast. It's in Carrotuck County. As you can see, it's in disrepair, and there's plenty of water laying about here. Water and electricity don't mix, and you don't want it standing like this. Standing water in a system like this is just a bad idea. So exposure to the elements, deterioration over time. Specific to the BESS or the battery energy storage systems is battery degradation or minor malfunctioning flaws that cause thermal runaway. These are the fires that just keep on burning. So lithium-ion batteries are also known to burn for several days. Fire departments will just let them burn, of course, letting all those chemicals into the air. Randy Coleman stated there will be fires, and battery fires are notorious to difficult to extinguish, and water can exacerbate the fire. ICAST has scaled back their PV proposal to a foot-in-door Phase 1. There's a mesquite solar project in Arlington, Arizona. They considered five phases, and those last two phases added the batteries. So what assurances do we have that we don't have a runaway fire situation? Is that my time? All right. So we don't have any fire hydrants. There's only one access road to the solar farm area. Fire stations must drive water takers. We have, need foam suppressant to put out solar panel fires. Fire stations, we need to stock both foam suppressant and conduct training to level up to deal with these fires. And just last but not least, I do have a picture here of just a PV fire. This is not having anything to do with battery backups. This is a photovoltaic fire, and it is burning on its own. So there's all kinds of fires that come with these things, and it is a serious community hazard. Thank you.
I'm Kate Davis. I live at 742 Stone Crest Drive, and we're building on Coolbrook Road, here to talk about ecosystem damage. There's definitely going to be wildlife disruption. Any kind of construction is going to cause that, but regular construction isn't going to cause complications with bird migration, habitat destruction, food source deterioration. Birds get confused. The bright lights of the panels are like mirrors, reflecting the sun. That's their purpose. But the birds will crash into them, which can also damage the panels. It will affect their flying patterns, and they can run into each other, causing fatalities in bird populations or injuries which lead to fatalities. And that causes a ripple effect on local bird populations. It can cause behavioral changes. Birds will avoid the panels and fly around them away from their natural areas of habitat, which could negatively affect their mating and breeding habits. These behavioral changes may have long-term effects on bird populations and distribution of birds. Putting solar installations on undeveloped land requires removing the above-ground vegetation that many animals rely on for food and shelter. This rapid, sorry, this rapid construction disrupts the entire ecosystem of an area affecting the entire food chain, impacting endangered species. Plant surveys and species identification are constantly evolving because this county features a variety of habitats, from Lake Norman to the Brushy Mountains, which support different plant communities. We don't know what we could be losing on this land because the environmental surveys studying plant and animal life have not been done. Snowballing affects damaging local wildlife, migration, and movement, impacting farming, foraging, and hunting. There are deer all over this countryside here, and I know the fences for the solar installation are going to change the way that they move through the country. People rely on venison for food. This will impact deer population and hunting viability. In North Carolina, we have over 500 species of native bees. Native bees that pollinate are native flowers, native trees, and native foods. Most of these bees are ground nesting. Contaminants are absolutely going to affect native pollinators. We are also home to around 40 species of fireflies. They nest in the ground in leaf litter. Their numbers continue to decline yearly because of the loss of habitat and ground pollution. This might only be 40 acres this time, but every acre we lose to solar is an acre we aren't ever getting back. It won't be put back. Next time, it will be the land across 115, then a data center somewhere else, an Amazon warehouse, et cetera. The devaluing of the natural world, the indifference for the gift that God has given us, is what led to this: people making deals with devils to pay property taxes. We have a responsibility to the people who come behind us, to our children and to our grandchildren, to give them a chance to experience the life in the country the way that we've gotten to. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, County Commissioners. My name is Lonnie Van Drake, and I live at 326 Prospect Road. Microclimate change and maintenance are two things our community needs to consider when making decisions that will affect all of us. Solar plants absorb energy and have a high reflectivity rate, which causes a reaction known as heat island effect. Mitchell A. Powell Suckerman, an assistant professor from University of Maryland's College of Agriculture and Natural Resources, along with colleagues from University of Arizona and the Nevada Center of Excellence, agree that instead of cooling the soil beneath the panels, it heats it, creating a heat island effect that can reach temperatures up to 149 degrees. This can change surrounding ecosystems by depleting natural vegetation, whereas croplands might decrease. This also can change the natural hydrologic process in our area. Moisture levels in the soil were found to be redistributed, leading to erosion and potential runoff, which would contaminate natural water sources. Now, I'd like to draw your attention to the panels themselves. Solar panels are vulnerable to system failures, lack of timely repair and maintenance. They are susceptible to environmental damage and occurrences leading to diminished activity. Pollen, hail, lightning, wind, and fire can negatively impact and cause significant damage. Solar panels, and significant damage to solar panels, sorry. Pollen in our area can be significant at times, from pollen producing weeds, grasses, and trees. Panel components that require routine maintenance are PV modules, inverters, mounting structures, cabling connectors, combiner boxes, monitoring systems, transformers, and batteries. Which brings community concern to the forefront again. Who will pay for maintenance and repairs? They are daily, monthly, quarterly, and semi-annually, and annually. They will need continued maintenance. These systems will need funding on a continued basis. This will negatively impact our county budget, and that means that you and I will be forced to cover the shortfall through our taxes. And I'd also like to speak on a side note. And I'd also like to speak on a side note. When Sam Lippman had went ahead and said that there would be jobs for, that would come through this process, he pointed out Atlanta is where they would draw construction jobs. That does not benefit anybody in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Tyler Davis.
My name is Tyler Davis. I live at 742 Stonecrest Drive, building off of Coolbrook. With the land, the destruction to the land to install solar panels renders the land useless for up to 30 to 40 years. Others state it irreversibly damages the land. Solar power depletes farmland of rich soil, according to the Seville. Severe heat temperatures shut down solar panels. Additionally, solar panels must have 300 days of sunshine for effective output. A 2021 study by the National Renewable Energy Laboratory found that, on average, solar panel outputs fall by 0.5% to 0.8% each year. This rate of decline is called solar panel degradation rate. Landfills and NC, at this point, do not allow decommission or damaged solar panels. And according to the International Renewable Energy Agency, only 10% of solar panels in the world have been recycled. As these decompose, forever chemicals are leached into the air and ground. However, the cost to deconstruct, load, and move the panels is so enormous, the solar panels are often left decomposing in the solar field. All existing new utility-scale solar projects in North Carolina must register with the NCDQ, which is the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, by November 1st, 2025, or at least 90 days before beginning a construction of a new rebuilt or expanded utility-scale solar project. Registration must be updated with the NCDQ every five years. The following information must be included with the project's registration. The owner and any other legal entity responsible for decommissioning and any financial assurance. Equipment that will be subject to decommissioning, including the location, size, number, and type of PV modules. The identification of any PFAs, any PFAs, forever chemicals associated with the project, and whether the PV modules are likely to be characterized as hazardous waste upon decommissioning. Summary project timeline, including actual or anticipated construction, operation, and service life dates. Cost estimate for decommissioning the project and restoring the project site. Proposal for satisfying any applicable financial assurance requirements under the new law, and copies of previously executed decommissioning plans and/or financial assurance established pursuant to the local government ordinance of the land agreement. According to conversation, or according to previous slides, we see that the financial stability for that is very shaken. Iredale County's Land Development Code R65 is the removal of solar energy equipment and site restoration. The property owner or responsible party shall have six months to complete the decommissioning of the solar facility. A decommissioning plan shall be required as part of the conditional district rezoning The following items are required to be addressed or included. Identification of the party currently responsible for decommissioning. All costs for the removal of solar panels, buildings, cables, or cabling, electrical components, roads, fencing, and any other associated facilities down to 36 inches below grade. All costs associated with provisions to restore the land to a condition reasonable similar to its condition before the development. Including, but not limited to: stabilizing the soil, restoring ground cover, and disposal of all materials per good management practices that are in effect at the time of decommissioning. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the decommissioning plan shall be recorded by the applicant in the Iredale County Register of Deeds. The decommissioning plan and estimated cost of removal shall be updated every five years or upon change of ownership of either property or project owners. And according to, in a quote, 12/6 of 2020, Donald Van der Vaart, it's a hard name to say, sorry, Commissioner of the NC Environmental Management Commission, "Decommissioning costs are substantial, and many of the plants are currently owned by undercapitalized limited liability companies. The substantial costs, some 15 years from now, may well rest either on the landowner or the county's as a result." So, as people talked about previously, with the financial instability that is happening, it sounds more or less that this could very well fall on you guys, us, and the county's budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And Susie, you're gonna have to hit the last name. I know you've said it a couple of times in here, but I never did it right.
De Giacomo, residing also at 326 Prospect Road. So, I wanted to talk about fusion energy versus renewable energy, and this is rather preemptive because it's not under consideration right now. But I would like to submit that you all, as influencers, can potentially influence our upstream, our upstream, NC rep Jeff McNeely, US rep Pat Harrigan, who is already a proponent of fusion energy. So what I'd like to point out is that renewable energy, as we have seen, is not the green energy that we have been sold. We've been sold a rotten bill of goods. None of us here would be up here tonight if solar energy was green energy. If there was no impacts to our environment, our children, our wildlife, we would not be up here tonight. So I just want to mention fusion energy as a possible option that can be considered for the future. For the John Locke Foundation, a more sustainable, cost-effective, and productive alternative to solar is clean nuclear fusion energy. This energy source is now available on a smaller mid-range scale, which makes it more likely that it can be installed without any of the impacts of a large nuclear reactor. Renewable energy, despite making great strides in combating the effects of fossil fuels, or so they say, has drawbacks. Solar panels are incredibly expensive and very inefficient, as we have seen in the year-over-year degradation rate. And they fall victim to inconsistency in non-favorable conditions such as an overcast sky. So we are very much dependent on the weather to give us 300 days of sunshine, which I don't think we can count on here. Fusion power does not directly release CO2 whatsoever, as one of the benefits of so-called renewable energy, but fusion power doesn't release it at all. And the plant does not have the waste concern that exists with damaged and outdated solar panels. An additional bonus that is made apparent through the comparison with fish and plants is that there is no possibility for a nuclear meltdown. So I just submit that for your consideration. And what I'd like to talk to you now is basically stewardship. We, in this community, would appreciate your oversight and stewardship as it relates to our community well-being, to our health that is at stake with fires, hail, lightning that could set off a solar panel fire. So we are just asking that you consider stewardship when we're talking about the community, when we're talking about energy, because there are other energy sources, and solar is not green energy. There is, as has been already stated, a plethora of examples around the nation and around the world of how solar has ruined not only the fields that they are installed on, but also the health of people in surrounding areas. I want to point out one place which was, I want to, it was in Nevada, and the residents that were close to this solar field, every one of them wound up with breathing problems. And I don't have the reference to it, but it is just another example of how our health is at stake. And so I would like you to listen to that compelling evidence that we have brought tonight, and that you have heard about the devastating impacts to our wildlife, our environment. And if, again, if this solar was so green, why are we seeing all of this evidence by many, many communities in the United States specifically? So we just ask you to vote for us, and vote for your community, vote for your children and grandchildren as well. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next person speaks Fred Lowry. For the record, you're using some time off of Billy Burgess that he relinquished, correct?
Yes. Thank you for allowing us to be here. My name is Fred Lowry. I live at 636 Morgan Ford Road. That video that you saw up there was just below me, the bridge on Morgan Ford Road, the flood of November 2020 that we had. And the other side that you didn't see was the bottom, that there was 20-some feet of water at that bridge, and then that bottom was about 10 acres, and it had about seven feet of water in it. That was pushing, and of course, that would have been a lot higher, or could have been. So that's an issue. You know, I'm, I gotta tell you, I'm pretty outraged at this concept that you're trying to sell this as clean energy. I mean, in China...
You need to, Mr. Lauper, please, to address this, please.
I'm sorry. In China, where these panels are made, they burn coal there. You know, you're worried about CO2. There's a tremendous amount of coal there. And then when, in Europe, when they're trying to recycle these things, they actually incinerate them, creating more CO2. There's a tremendous amount of plastics in there. They can't take them apart. The only way to do that is incinerate them. They can put them in acid baths, or they chop them up. And so, this is not clean, and particularly from the aspect of the chemicals, the heavy metals. As many of you know, I'm a pharmacist and a naturopath, and I deal with people that have toxic metal poisoning, and just because we still have, we have a lot of that, doesn't mean we need to add to it. Introduce stability in the long term? I don't think so. You know, this is not financially feasible. Stability has to have financial feasibility, and there's planned obsolescence in these units. And when you talk about the carbon footprint being smaller, good grief. You gotta be kidding me. You know, but you've also got this company, this Finance for Impact. This is a global company. You've seen the websites of these companies. You know, they're, this is not about helping us, and that's what we're talking about here. So, these things, this is financially infeasible. I want to say to the landowners that I do have sympathy for your situation. You know, during the planning board, you were talking about that you, you know, you don't know how to farm, and, you know, paying the taxes and that. And with all due respect, as a matter of public record, the taxes for that property $713.07 per year. And my concern is, if you go back to the planning board and the infeasibility of this company's financial status and the requirements to decommission this, I'm really concerned that what's gonna happen is, the landowners, whether it be this generation or the next, they're not gonna have the money, the resources, to decommission this project. This company may or may not exist. We don't know that. And what will happen is, you'll lose the land because of the cost of decommissioning. And that's one of the really concerning things here is, you know, this whole project has been sold to us and to landowners on something that may not be based in reality. And it looks nice, and it gives financial reward upfront in terms of the landowners, but this issue of decommissioning this property is gonna be a real problem. I would like to point out, too, that your planning board vote 5/4, two of them were already involved in solar projects, so I'm not sure that vote was, should have been in that direction. The, you know, if you believe in solar at this point, and it doesn't really take much time to get on the internet and find out that this is a problem, it's a problem everywhere. It's not a good project. It's not good for the future. I was, like all of us, we thought solar's great. You know, it's gonna, it's gonna, I mean, what could be better? Free energy. And then when I wanted to put it on my property, on my, for my own personal use, you know, it was financially infeasible, and it continues that way, and it's not feasible unless the government gives tax money to the people that are selling this bill of goods. So if you still believe in solar, if you still believe that this is okay, and that it's clean, and that there's no problem, because, you know, we've heard from many issues, and I think the two biggest things are the financial feasibility of this company, which, by the way, the gentleman that spoke on that has an MBA, so he knows what he's talking about. And the other thing is the decommission. Y'all all know that we can't put these in our landfills. Our landfills won't take these solar panels. My understanding is there's only two places in the country that will take these things, and they're not, they're not in the state. And so what are we gonna do with that? Is that gonna end up being a boneyard of broken-down panels that's gonna leak? All that stuff's gonna leach into the water. You know, will the landowners be able to keep their land and restore it back for future generations? You know, it doesn't look good. But if you, if you believe that this is still the right thing, I would submit that it's not the right place. It's definitely not the right place. The topography there, going down to the creek, to Rocky Creek, there's certainly potential for problems there. If we get a flood like we had before, there's, you know what floods can do? Those panels might be in my bottom. You know, they could be down, they could wash out, and now you got a really big problem. That creek goes into the South Yadkin, and then the Yadkin. There's one other river that goes into the PD, down to Wilmington. There's a lot of municipalities that take water from what starts up here. So I thank you for your time. I do, would like to say, I do agree that we don't need solar panels. We don't need them in this county. There should never be another project put in this county or in this state. This is just the most absurd fiasco I think I've ever come across, maybe not ever, but with the exception of one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Joanne Harmon, I think you relinquished your time to someone else. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Next person signed up is Ken Journey.
I appreciate your, oh, I'm Ken Journey from 148 Titres Solid Drive, Statesfield. That's in the south end of the county. I was born and raised in North Iredale, lived there most of my life, and that's where my heart lies. I appreciate the attention and patience you've given these folks. My interest is in how this project will affect the county fire tax revenue. Y'all probably know, that's my big passion, is fire departments. The sites in the central fire tax district, where the tax assessor says real property values average $9,000 an acre, that's land and buildings, well below the $66,000 county average per acre. North Iredale needs more of the right kind of value businesses. Central's fire district has no interstate highways, so 115 is the best location for high-value businesses that can reduce the tax burden on homeowners. The right decision on this project is determined by several, by answers to several issues. Landowners, number one, I believe the landowner has a right to determine uses of their property that are legal, reasonable, and safe. Number two, I think solar farms are just unattractive. I think they're just plain ugly. If you drive about Highway 16 out of Conover or down 220, going south out of Greensboro, you'll see miles of ugly solar farms. So if you decide to approve this project, I hope you'll shield them from the highway and from these people's properties. The solar farms damage the environment. We were told that coal ash didn't... We were told that coal ash didn't pollute, but Duke Energy now has to move that huge coal ash landfill down near the steam station on Lake Norman, where there's a high incidence of cancer, where coal ash was used to fill land for development, when we told, we were told coal ash didn't cause problems. We'll pay higher utility bills to have, for Duke to pay the fines and remove the coal ash. So when solar panels are later removed to a hazardous waste dump somewhere, can the land be reclaimed for farmland? I don't know the answer to that. If Energy United favors this project, it may be worthy, worthy, because I think a lot of Energy United. Does a solar farm increase property valuation? The site appears to be in present value use at a reduced tax rate, and the applicant has stated it's a nonprofit company. So does nonprofit solar farm significantly increase the property's tax valuation? Answers to these and other issues determine if the solar project is worthy. I don't know those answers, but trust that you, that you know them, and you'll make a decision that best serves all of Iredell County. And I appreciate the responsibilities that y'all have taken to make a lot of tough decisions that'll never satisfy everybody. So just, I just ask you to do what's right for all of Iredell County. Appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll take a 10-minute recess. We'll start back at 7:40.
We'll start back. Thomas Schumaker. If you will, state your name and your address.
Good evening, y'all. I'm Thomas Schumaker. My address is 314 South Daniel Street, Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm the State Director for North Carolina's Conservatives for Clean Energy. I was born and raised in Western North Carolina, and I grew up working in Statesville as HVAC mechanic. We are proud to represent an organization that promotes clean energy through conservative values. The project, we strongly support the rezoning, allowing the solar facilities in Northwest Iredell County. This area is ideal due to existing infrastructure and minimal residential presence. This rezoning delivers economic benefits to the county, promotes landowner rights, boosts local revenues with minimal costs to the county, and creates jobs during construction and operation. Solar is a fiscally responsible land use with limited long-term impact. With decommissioning plans in place, the land remains viable for future agricultural use. We applaud your thoughtful considerations and urge you to approve this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hannah, I think it's Claus, maybe?
Good evening. My name is Hannah Claus, and I am with the Southern Environmental Law Center at 136 East Rosemary Street, Suite 500 in Chapel Hill, North Carolina. The Iredell Board of Commissioners should approve the conditional rezoning application for the ICAST Community Solar Project. Solar technology is safe and reliable. At the Southern Environmental Law Center, we work to ensure that communities in North Carolina and across the Southeast have access to a safe and healthy environment. We believe that solar is safe for people and the environment. Academics at NC State University reviewed studies on the safety of solar technology and found that the risks to health and safety are negligible and vastly outweighed by the benefits of producing solar energy. Solar panels are built to withstand storms and hurricanes. Many solar systems are designed to endure wind speeds of up to 150 miles per hour. The durability and strength of these systems improves grid reliability by helping communities keep the power on in the aftermath of storms. For example, in the wake of Hurricane Helene, a solar microgrid in Hot Springs, North Carolina, was able to power the downtown area while the distribution line to the town was restored. While solar panels are durable and long-lasting, they eventually reach the end of their operational life. Decommissioned panels are often recycled. There is a solar panel recycling facility in Salisbury, which is no more than an hour from North Iredell County. And solar recycling is economic. An analysis by local engineers found that the salvage value of equipment from utility-scale solar systems generally exceeds general contractor estimates for the cost to remove the entire solar system. Solar projects, like the nonprofit ICAST Community Solar Project, have significant and lasting benefits by reducing energy costs, particularly creating additional savings for low-income households, improving energy reliability, and creating local workforce development opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick, I think it's L-I-M-E-N-Z-Z. You had to fix me on that one.
Yes, sir. It's J-I-M-E-N-E-Z.
Okay, thank you.
Jimenez. Yeah, I'm Nick Jimenez with the Southern Environmental Law Center of Kana. We're a nonpartisan nonprofit based in the South. I work out of our Chapel Hill office, 136 East Rosemary Street, Suite 500. I want to start by touching on the water contamination issue that was present in a lot of the presentations. And I just want to provide a little context. I focus on North Carolina solar in my work, have for six or seven years. And just if folks haven't followed this, the state had a process on what do we need to do to decommission all of these solar farms? It was House Bill 329. Department of Environmental Quality held this, I think it was about a year-long, maybe 18-month stakeholder process that looked into all of the kind of details of what, you know, what solar panels are like. And there just, there was just no risk in, in the field. Disposal, I think the conclusion was that they were universal wastes in the worst-case scenario because there, you know, some different kinds. So I just, I swear, if we thought there was any risk to water contamination, we wouldn't be here supporting this. I just want to be clear about that. Most of what I want to say touches on the interaction between solar and agricultural land in the state. Just again, to provide some context, there are folks who look at this regularly. Our, there's a nonprofit called the North Carolina Sustainable Energy Association that does a report every couple of years, how much ag land is solar taking? Well, this recent report was in 2022, and it was 0.28% of the agricultural land. That's probably gone up a little bit. It's been a few years, but it's, I'm sure it's under 1%. It's just, it's not a threat to agriculture, to a rural way of life. And I, I think this project shows that it can be a way to preserve, you know, the rural characteristics of an area where, you know, you have this family who, I was at the planning board meeting and recall hearing them talk about the tax burden that they feel from the, the land that they have and how putting solar on one portion of it would allow them to keep it. And, and I think, you know, maybe this goes without saying, but if they were forced to sell part of that land, like anybody, they're probably going to have to sell to the highest bidder. And, you know, as suburban sprawl creeps north from Charlotte, that, that would very likely be housing development, which has never, you know, never reconverted back to an agricultural use. So I think, you know, putting solar on that one, on that 40 acres, I know they're, they're looking into sheep farming. You can put, you know, you can, instead of a mower, you can have sheep graze in between the rows. I know they're looking into that. It would actually put that land into agricultural use, when I understand it's not now, and potentially preserve the 150 acres on the other side of the road. Last thing I want to close with is kind of, to my mind, kind of an elephant in the room in these conversations, and that's property rights. It's kind of a bedrock American value that, you know, when you have your land, you can do what you want with it. And I think that principle is especially powerful in a case like this where that might be the way that somebody gets to hold on to their land and a sixth-generation family get to, you know, keep their way of life. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you, sir. Nelson Cenaros.
Nelson Cenaros, 298 Rupert Road. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I come before you not out of opposition to renewable energy in principle, but out of concern for the specific impacts that solar panel projects, particularly large-scale installations, have on our community, our economy, and our environment. Let's begin with the land use impact. Solar farms require large swaths of land, land that in many cases could be used for agriculture, development, or conservation. Turning productive farmland or scenic open spaces into industrial arrays of glass and metal fundamentally changes the character of our region. Once the land is covered in panels, it's out of commission for decades. This affects not just aesthetics, but also property values and our community's rural identity. Second, there is the issue of economic cost versus benefit. These solar projects are often subsidized heavily by state and federal incentives. The truth is, without those subsidies, many of these projects wouldn't be economically viable. Meanwhile, the long-term maintenance costs, disposal of toxic materials like cadmium and lead, and the environmental costs of panel production are often downplayed or entirely ignored. And when those panels reach the end of their lifespan, often in just 20 or 25 years, who pays the, who pays to decommission them? Too often, it's the taxpayers. Third, we have energy reliability to consider. Solar is intermittent by nature. It only works when the sun is shining. That means we are still relying on fossil fuels or expensive battery systems to fill the gaps. So despite the promises, solar doesn't replace, replace our existing infrastructure. It adds to it and add a significant cost. And lastly, community consent and transparency are major concerns. Too many of these projects move forward without adequate input from those who are most affected, our neighbors, farmers, and local small businesses. Our citizens deserve to be part of the conversation, not treated as an afterthought, once contracts have been, already been signed. Commissioners, this is not about opposing progress. It is about demanding smart, balanced, and community-focused energy policy. We need solutions that actually work for us, not just in theory or in headlines, but in practice, right here at home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Beau Blackwelder.
I'm Beau Blackwelder. I live at 242 Cool Brook Road. I just want to back my whole community, everything they said. I agree with in that presentation. I am one of the closest properties to where this is going to be going. We've been there four years this month, and we built that as our forever home. I've got two young daughters. We do have a well, as pretty much everybody else in that community does. I am very concerned about the long-term effects on our drinking water that we get from our well, everything else we do with the water from our well. We, our, our back of our property is Rocky Creek, and we do what a lot of people that grown up in that area. We were just, my daughters and I were just in the creek playing Sunday afternoon. So the long-term effects of what may or may not happen, that's my, one of my biggest concerns, not to mention all the other points that were pointed out. Also, just, the family mentioned that they're not farmers, but this particular piece of property is, is wooded area. If I'm not mistaken, there may be a little bit of cleared spot in it, but I just don't see how you're being green by clearing 40 acres almost of land, of trees, and whatever else it may be, their ecosystems for animals, habitats, the creek, and then throwing solar panels on it. And I mean, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. A lot of the points that I have already been pointed out, so just want you all to take all that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Caesar Prieto.
I'm David from Atlanta. Reference before. Caesar Prieto, 1477 Shub Court, Kennetza, Georgia. I work with Coalite Technologies. We are a solar company that was selected by ICAST to potentially develop, construct this project. Thank you, Commissioners, for having me here. I had kind of put together some points to talk about. I participated in the last hearing. And certainly some of the things that have been floated here, I, you know, I can understand. I'm going to talk to you guys like I'm talking to them. I can understand where you're coming from. We can group things in a couple of buckets in terms of the concerns that you all are having. One of them is your appreciation for nature. And the other one is related to your desire to have a safe, clean environment, not only for you, but for your children. Ironically, those are two of the things that actually moved me to get into the solar industry. So there seems to be a conflict of, of rationale there. And while, while I think that none of this is ideal, I mean, I would rather be placing panels on roofs if, if, if we could. Yeah. We all need to also take into account, and you can Google this up, and everything that you guys have been researching and putting here on this board has probably come from using ChatGPT. How much energy does it take to do a ChatGPT query? Well, North Carolina is expected to need eight times more power in the next few years because of data centers, because of industry, and because of our daily habits. Because we want to search stuff that we don't know, and there's an agent that'll give us an answer. So how do we satisfy that demand for energy? Solar is part of the solution. It's not a perfect solution, but it is part of the solution. There's been remarks here about fishing, and, I'm sorry, fusion energy. Fusion energy doesn't even exist. It's not commercial. We need to get real. And the options that we have at the table are burning gas, burning coal, or using solar. And if we want to burn gas, there's a seven-year backlog on the plants that make the engines to make electricity. Now, let's talk about environmental impacts. And I'm going to talk about the big elephant in the room, because people here talk about microclimates. Who's talking about the big climate? Do you guys know when the greenhouse effect was first discovered? Google it. 200 years ago. And 200 years later, we're still debating whether there's a greenhouse effect. There is. When we burn fossil fuels, it creates the effect of a greenhouse. It traps gases. It's warming our environment. It is making our environment more unpredictable. And when we burn fossil fuels, we're also generating those gases that they're referring to can cause asthma and can cause these other things. So Google out, Google what, what's coal ash? Or what's, somebody here was talking about green is poison. Well, black is poison. All the coal that gets burned and turns into coal ash ends up contaminating our, our water sources. So anyway, that's my very passionate kind of like intervention about some of the things that have been floated here. In terms of fire, and this has been repeated, yes, there have been fires with solar panels. Most of what you see in the news is associated with batteries. But there have been fires with solar panels, just as there are fires with any electrical equipment. We are working according to NEC code and local regulations, and we have all types of safeguards in place to avoid fires from happening. I'm running out of time. One more thing, and I'm not sure if I can borrow time from somebody else. Another important thing about contamination and, and heavy metals. Yes, if a panel cracks and it's left unattended in the field for a long period of time and water is, is, if it's, if it's raining, water will actually leach, can leach some of those heavy metals into the ground. But this is the point that I want to make. When we build a solar system like this, I know how much it's going to cost per kilowatt hour. And I can tell you that it's going to be a fraction of what you guys are paying on your utility bill. So without tax credits, there's already a business case, because I know how much it costs to make electricity from a solar system. Once the investment is made, this thing is like a cash cow.
Tom, sir.
If we are here 20 years from now, or not, somebody else. Should have contacted you like you did. But I didn't.
Locky, Locky Raper.
Hi, thanks for, let me take a little time to speak to you. Lock Raper, 313 Shaftesbury Court, Wake County in Raleigh. I'm kind of, I'm here, I met the ICAST founder in conjunction with some work that I do in energy efficiency. Kind of have two experiences that inform sort of my comments today. One, the last six, seven years, I've done, worked with hog, chicken, and turkey farms around the state on solar implementations and, and energy efficiency. And then currently, I work for Self-Help Credit Union and do financing of solar projects very similar to this. We, we do not have a financial interest in this. I do know Ravi Malhotra. You know, he's been in the industry 23-plus years, solid. He was doing solar when solar was really difficult to do. You know, from my perspective, a lot of information's been presented. In particular, I'm, I'm going to speak to kind of the finances of solar and why I think this makes sense for Iredell County. And, you know, in, in my world, we hear a lot of stories, but we have to, to kind of dive in on the numbers, and that's what determines whether or not we make a, make a loan or not. So I think one very important number is 66%. And that is the percentage of all new electricity generation that was solar. So of all the electricity generation that came online last year, 66% was solar. It's 50 megawatts. This project is five, I mean, that's 50,000 megawatts. This project is five megawatts. So you've got a lot of people that are saying solar is actually safe and safe at scale. You know, those are big IOUs, like Duke Energy making those investments, large financial institutions. The technology's proven. It's been around for, for multiple decades. So we, as a bank, as we look at projects like this, that's the first thing we look at is, is this bankable? Is it, can you rely on the, the technology? And you can't. And there's, you know, that 66% number, that 50,000-megawatt number speaks to that. I think another very important thing to understand is, one of the gentlemen talked a lot about the Inflation Reduction Act, the recent bill passage, and he conflated a lot of information. There were some quotes, The New York Times, shouldn't always quote The New York Times because it's not always accurate. The key, the key number you need to understand is 30%. That's the ITC, that's the tax credit. The bill that was just passed locked in that 30% tax credit for the next two years. That is not in question. So we, when we, as a bank, look at a project like this, we want to see two things. The main thing we want to see is a PPA, a source of repayment. Energy United has signed that PPA. By doing that, they've said effectively, we believe in this project. The math makes sense for us. That, we, as a bank, as we lend money, that's what we're looking at. That's our source of repayment. To some degree, what ICAST does or doesn't do really doesn't matter. This project will be built in six to eight months, and then the, all the costs largely will be locked in. There will be some operating costs, but the beauty of solar is you have no fuel costs at zero for forever. So that is not a variable. Unlike, say, a gas power plant where the price of gas goes up and down, and you have to anticipate that. You don't have to do that with a solar project. So the, the point of all that is this is not going to land in, you know, you, you're not going to have a responsibility to pay for this. It effectively will be built and de-risked in about six months, and the source of repayment is going to be Energy United. So if you think they're going out of business, then that's another conversation. But as long as you have faith in them and their ability to, to honor a contract, this project will be, will, will go to conclusion. And the other thing to keep in mind with on that point is because the ITC sunsets in two years, a project like this in 2028 just got 30% more expensive, which means that the, the power purchased is going to be more expensive. These projects make sense for, for hog farmers. They make sense for, they lower, they increase tax revenue. They're obviously a benefit to the, to the landowner. And an important thing to understand, and this is philosophically why I think solar is so important for North Carolina. We have no oil resources. We have no natural gas. We have no coal. What we do have is solar energy. That lives here in Iredell County. If you are not using solar, you by definition are importing that from somewhere else. So it keeps the money here locally, and I think that's a very important thing, you know, that helps everyone. Thank you.
Trevor Mailer.
Good evening. My name's Trevor Mailer. I live at 5593 Wilkesboro Highway. That is the property in question. I came up tonight speaking on behalf of my grandmother. Several people have mentioned landowner rights, and those are a thing in North Carolina. But what I'd rather talk about is land stewardship. It's a duty that if you own land, you should try to take care of it and preserve it and keep it for your future family members. If you go up to the New Hope Community, it's changed a lot. I'm only 27 years old, and I can ride by and see what used to be a farm field. It used to be a barn is now a house, or two houses, or three houses. The rural community is, it's growing. I mean, right down the road on Lenny's Mill, there's 60 acres for sale right now. And with the current land value, I doubt any farmers are going to grab that. It's most likely going to turn into more houses. I don't blame people for selling out. I mean, look at the price of land. A fair house can price 18,000 to 20,000 right now. That's a lot of money you can put in your pocket. But if you ask around to a lot of folks that own a good amount of land and how they plan on keeping it and how they are keeping it, most of them will tell you they do leases. They lease it to another farmer, or they lease it to the phone company for a couple of towers, or they lease it to power companies. So I'm asking, what's the real difference between those types of leases and the type we're trying to secure? And the main difference is this is regulated. You don't have to rezone or sign a contract or anything in any of those. The solar field that they're looking to build is going to be regulated on the county, state, and federal level. So if you've got concerns about safety and all that, you should probably take it up with those organizations that regulate it. Another way we're trying to be good to the land is in addition to the solar panels, we've been in contact with a company that's willing to put sheep inside and keep sheep on the 25, 20 to 25 acres they're looking to redo. We're also looking at getting bee hives for pollinators, because bees do really well around solar panels. The last point I'd like to make is about the community itself. New Hope Community is a very rural, quiet community. I've lived there my whole life, minus a four-year college degree. Most folks kind of stayed to themselves, minus a wave as they passed by. I know the opposition to this project has been very loud and willing to come to all these meetings. However, there's about 40 people in this room, and the New Hope Community is much bigger than that. I've spoken with several members that are supportive of this idea. They're just afraid to say anything because of the negative backlash we've received. Some of them actually called y'all or your office and left messages or talked to you. And a real common view I've heard from several people is if it's your property, you should have the right to do what you'd like. And that's just a common view up in our area.
Trying to read the writing here, Janice Mailer? Jamie, okay.
Uh, my name is Jamie Mailer. I live at 172 Taylor Springs Road, right around the corner, all right? I am the fourth generation of the six generations, um, who have stewarded this land. I live in a house built by the second generation, and you've heard from my son Trevor, the fifth generation, and I just want to tell you, the sixth generation, they're like two of the cutest things I've ever seen in my life, all right? Every grandparent in the room would say the same thing about their grandchildren. And we've heard people talk about their grandchildren tonight. Uh, my grandchildren are living on the property we're talking about. Now, um, I don't think I would make a decision. I'm very blessed, I feel that our family is very blessed to have this opportunity. Um, and I'm not gonna make a decision. What's the point of making a decision that will allow you to keep the land in your family and hand it down to future generations if you're gonna ruin it or ruin the community? I'm not gonna make a decision like that. I'm not gonna do anything to harm those precious little kids, okay? And I think that this solar farm, especially when you add in the component of sheep farming and other things that you can do, uh, with the bee hives and things like that, I think it could allow me to pass this on to future generations in better shape and, and actually be more viable than it is right now. Um, I wanted to address some concerns. So we talked all about, uh, you know, finances and maintenance and clearing and all of those things. All right. Here's my understanding, um, and I'm gonna read this. Uh, the company you've heard from tonight, ICAS, they are bonded, and that means that all federal, state, and county, uh, regulations, uh, that apply to these aspects will be enforced from construction through operation and eventually removal, all right? Uh, North Carolina right now is the fourth or fifth state in solar energy production in the United States of America. They were number two, but we had a problem with one of our solar farms in North Carolina, and since then, the regulations have increased a lot. Um, the, they led to big changes in North Carolina. One being site selection, two being construction methods, and three being in the technology of the solar panels themselves, and what they can and cannot do and take, and what they will do, okay? Um, on top of that, Iredell County, they have one of the toughest inspection departments in the state of North Carolina, and when you want to do a project like this, it's really hard to get, to jump through all the hoops. Um, I'm sure that because of all of these standards, that is why this board has already approved two solar farms in northern Iredell County. One is off Tomlin Mill Road, and one is in Harmony near the rendering plant. Those solar farms have not caused any problems, and the main difference between this farm and those, uh, that are existing, is that we are adding a second agricultural component by bringing in the sheep. Now, I know that you've heard some opposition to this from the community, and believe me so everywhere, we've heard it at meetings, we've heard it online, never in person. We've also talked to our neighbors, we've talked to farmers, we've talked to adjoining landowners, and by and large, um, they've come to us with questions, they've come to us to voice their support, and they, they voiced it. And I understand that some of them actually called in and voiced their support to you. Um, I like to do things face-to-face. I'm old-fashioned that way. Um, I learned to do research long before the internet was, uh, the internet, you know? Um, so I like to talk to people about things, and that's what I've tried to do, to find out, uh, what I needed to find out. Um, but I've appreciated the neighbors that have come to us and talked to us about it. Nobody that's talked to you tonight, come to see me, asked me a question, nothing. They're against it. All right? Okay, so the other thing that I do like to do, and I'm a little, I hope I'm not old-fashioned, I like to do things by the book. Um, and we have followed all the rules, all the regulations, and all the protocols up to this point, and I plan to continue doing that, and I'm, all the partners that we partner with to do that as well. I'm now a grandmother, and I've been blessed with a rich family legacy, which includes land ownership. My family have been good stewards and good neighbors all the way down through the years. And my first relative landed in New Hope in 1779. We've been here for a while, all right? The land was created, I, we, we've looked at this opportunity prayerfully.
It's time.
Okay, all right. Thanks, thank you for listening, and thank you for your attention in this, and good luck.
Thank you. Rich.
How y'all doing? Good?
Good.
First of all, I'd like to say that all the people that had spoken before me that are against this solar farm, I really appreciate what you've done. All the statistical data that you had, that you put up on the screen was awesome. Uh, I don't know how I can follow you. You, 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 you outdid yourselves. Um, the only thing I can do is give you a few statistics that maybe you hadn't heard yet, uh, and probably you folks already know this. Agriculture in Iredell County has an economic impact of $662 million. Iredell County ranks first in dairy production, first in, in all cattle, both beef and dairy, and corn, silage production. Uh, one of the statistics that I found to be, uh, very interesting was a study that was put on by the, uh, University of Rhode Island economist that, uh, ran a study on, uh, how, what the, the, um, how, how the, how values were, uh, the, the diminution in values caused by these solar farms. And the, uh, what they did, the study utilized 400,000 housing transactions in the Rhode Island and Massachusetts area between 2005 and 2019, within a three miles, within three miles of one of the 284 solar sites. And, uh, the examination proved that, uh, there was an average of 1.7% decline in the values that were, um, that were within a mile of the solar array, and homes that were within a tenth of a mile declined, declined by 7%. Um, I think, I think it was also interesting that, uh, the American Farmland Trust, uh, ranked North Carolina second in the nation for farmland threatened from residential development. Residential and, um, residential development isn't the only big threat to our farmland, however, which was stated by North Carolina Agricultural Commissioner Steve Troxler, that said that, uh, solar farms were part of the, uh, loss in, in farmland, and already 40 to, 40,000 to 45,000 acres of farmland was lost to solar facilities. Don't have much time left, do I? The North Carolina Utilities Commission, uh, provided, they, they, they made a statement of how to preserve farmland, agricultural jobs, and reliable power. Uh, add more zero emissions nuclear power, pumps, pump storage, battery storage, and natural gas facilities, rather than overbuild solar. I want to tell you one historical thing, that, uh, 40, 44 years ago, I bought some land up in, uh, Turnersburg and built a house on it, and it was, it was on, uh, Rocky Creek. And 40 years ago, I attended a commissioner's meeting, I was sitting right over there. JP Stevens, who had, that had a big plant in Turnersburg, uh, was gonna put some more affluent into Rocky Creek, and I made it a point to come to the commissioner's meeting to, uh, find out how that was gonna affect my property. And since then, I have moved, 33 years ago, I moved up to New Hope, bought 50 acres and built a house there, sold the house in Turnersburg, just moved up the creek where the water's cleaner. I fish in Rocky Creek, I hunt ducks in Rocky Creek, I wade around in Rocky Ki- Creek. It's probably the cleanest large body of, uh, moving water in Iredell County, and I reckon I'm out of town.
Yes, sir, you are.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Jonathan Waddell.
Good evening, County Commissioners. My name's Jonathan Waddell. I reside on Hillsdale Road. Tonight, you've been asked to change the character of our community from a traditional ruling, rural farming community to an area of developed, by its nature will destroy our land, water resources, air, wildlife, and the healthy environments which we cherish and where we live, work, and raise our children. Despite the rhetoric of benefits you hear tonight from those who profit, whom I assume most do not live in this area, there is grave concern related to this development which have been expressed. This blight on the community has, most people here tonight would agree, come with content and disdain. As elected officials, you have the responsibility to protect our communities and resources, one being the fertile land of Iredell County and the legacy of sweat and tears that so many poured into this land, which has fed our region for centuries. Many voices you will not, will not be heard tonight. One of those is Della Ann William White, um, the property owner, whose family tended the land that you are asked to turn into a utility-scale power plant. Where's her voice tonight? Some people in the community say she will never accept this. Um, our community, um, where the mound people, then the eastern Sioux, uh, Siouxians, had lived and, and immigrants like the mound people, many European immigrants found good soil, game, fresh water, rich in cul- this, this area we are, that we live in is rich in, in culture and history. There are historic identifying landmarks of our town, New Hope, on the property. Um, as noted in, in the, the GPS benchmark, which is a stone and brass marker, this was placed in the 1800s for, for all the, there's two in the, in the, in that represent our, our community, one is actually on their land. Um, the Mountains to the Sea Bike Trail is on Lenny's Mill Road. Um, they're gonna be seeing a solar farm, that's what we want to represent as our community. Um, these, these, these tre- natural treasures cannot be replaced. It's repugnant to change the identity of North Iredell into an area that mocks old farm countrysides and hardworking people. As the Honorable James Iredell, whom this country, who, whom our county is named for is, is, was one of the first justices of the Supreme Court and Attorney General of North Carolina during the Revolutionary War, he wrote, "Our government, thank God, sprang from the deliberate voices of the people. We ask you to hear our voices and deny this rezoning." So quick fun facts, the Brushy Mountain is one of the oldest mountains in the world, uh, one of the last ancient forests with 400-year-old oak trees. Pre-modern Indian artifacts are everywhere. Um, with that being said, the finest bronze from the Bronze Ages, 3, 3300 to 1200 B.C. were made from copper from the Great Lakes area. What do we have? Reducing farmland, okay, so, um, I also want to go into a little bit about reducing farmland in an area will increase farm insurance. Just ask the Planning Board member Holland, who runs the Insurance Bureau, the Farm, the Farm Insurance Bureau. Forcing projects in North Iredell to reduce farmland competition should not be a focus of your, of you commissioners, which also benefits Planning Board members. Um, no one was informed that I've ever talked to in Iredell, south, north, wherever, well, no one was informed of the UN Agenda 2045, I mean, as you guys call it, the Horizon 45. Um, there's been no due process, um, but I just want to go through real fast a couple of ICAS responses. The power, local, um, you mean Mecklenburg? That's not really local. Where's the battery banks? If it's local, we have to have a battery bank, like the one in Albemarle, for Albemarle. We have none, so nope, it's not for us. The Mailer family, where's Della, the owner of the property? Is she competent? Where's the, not gonna go into the will, um, because it hasn't happened yet. Local construction companies from Atlanta. Um, then, uh, the SPLC people are here today, their previous boss, their mentor, was Biden's energy czar, who's responsible for Palestine, Ohio, the LA fires, and Hawaii.
30 seconds.
Um, so I ask you, since we don't have due process in this county, and the, and it seems like the, um, the Planning Board gets to profit from these projects they proposed to the commissioners, what, what's next? Are we going to see the Planning Board sell, start selling their own land for their own pieces of the solar pie paid for by US tax dollars? Um, and I want to leave with clear, tall oaks may never forget them. That is a motto from, uh, Engineer Brigade in World War II. We can never forget the tall oaks. Thank you.
Time, Samantha Waddell.
Good afternoon, Council and fellow citizens of Iredell County. For too long, our voices have been ignored, our heritage threatened by decisions favoring developers over community. From Scotts Creek Farmland Loss to Olent Solar Project, and now Taylor Springs Road, where 80% of the funding comes from government grants, our rural north is being destroyed by projects no one wants in their backyard. At the Taylor Springs Road, LiDAR reveals possible ancient mounds. This is the location we are talking about, for these solar panels are gonna go right on top of this mound that we have not even explored yet. Furthermore, less than five miles away from this actual area, there is another mound called Hill, Indian Hill Mound, which has been, um, excavated and is in private collections, which holds cultural significance and artifacts. Less than two miles away from this site, pre-modern Indian presence has also been discovered. A historical map marks areas of interest and treasures, which I have submitted and proofed in the last meeting and discussion at the Planning Board meeting, yet here we are moving forward. This is about our way of life. The secrecy, ignoring historical evidence, and failing to notify the community about the last three solar zonings, Horizon 2045, or the truck stop near a high school erodes the public trust. Possible corruption looms. Mrs. Holland is a registrar of deeds, is married to a voting member of the board, Mr. Holland, and he's also the county's largest dairy farmer, who should have recused himself. Despite what Mr. Holland said, I cannot borrow sugar from a solar panel. But I am not powerless. As a citizen, I am prepared to act. First, I have drafted a letter to the District Attorney to investigate the conflict of interest and potential corruption. Second, I contacted the Board of Elections for a petition to the General Assembly for separation of South Iredell under North Carolina General Statute 153A-1, since our values no longer align. Fun fact, we only need 10,000 signatures to get the ball rolling for separation, and that's one Sunday church meeting in our community. Third, I have submitted evidence, LiDAR artifacts, and maps to the North Carolina Office of State Archaeology for official protection. Together, we will fight tonight to preserve our country, our county, and our heritage for the future. Thank you.
That is all that got signed up. Mr. Lippman, I'll include you with, uh, Jake when I, when I close the public hearing. Is anyone here want to speak on this matter that's not already spoken? Come on up and state your name and your address. Come on up and state your name and your address.
Michael Suther, Ten Forty-three Lenny's Mill Road. I just want to ask the, the people that's proposing this project and the people that's going to vote on it, if you believe everything that these people have told you, and you believe it's safe, and it's the best thing for the community, how come you're not already taking your families up there and having a picnic under the solar panels that's already in place? And as far as the sheep, grass won't grow at a hundred degrees, and bees can't live at a hundred degrees, so neither one of them things are going to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? I will close the, you've already, you already spoken, you already had your time. I'll close the public hearing, turn it back over to Jake Planning and the applicant,
I have nothing further to add unless you have questions specifically for me, related to any of the concerns or questions, I'll be glad to answer anything. Otherwise, a lot of that information will need to be addressed by the applicant.
Anybody got anything for Jake?
Jake, just real quick, from Rocky Creek, it's been kind of talked about, from the topo map.
Yes, sir.
Elevation, lowest point of use to the...
So, it's roughly a two-hundred-foot separation from the floodplain and from what we would consider top of bank for creek separation. It's double what our ordinance requires, what they're proposing. The elevation, roughly from one thousand ten to one thousand sixty, one thousand seventy, so fifty-foot drop approximately from at least where they're proposing solar panels based on this point.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else for Jake? Mr. Littman, you got something you want to speak?
Yeah, just wanted to catch you off the air. Maybe repeating myself a little bit, but other people have talked about. Well, good evening, my name is Sam Littman, and I am my colleague from Denver from FFI, and I am the Director of Community and Utilities Solar Development, and I am the responsible person for developing this project. During the planning board hearing, I addressed many concerns that were originally raised on the March third neighborhood meeting, and you've heard a lot of people here tonight as well. In addressing these concerns, I referenced our expert opinions from our environmental consultants, our engineer, our engineer, construction people, you've heard from Caesar tonight, and also cited studies from credible sources, of course, EPA, DOE, national laboratories, Rural Health Organization, and the University of North Carolina, among others. And, and these studies point to a well-run solar farm, produces no toxic substances, does not contaminate water, has no significant fire risk, does not emit harmful electromagnetic waves, and creates no real noise pollution, and visibility concerns are mitigated by county-required setbacks. And of course, we're required to do this landscape corridor along the main road, plus our, our, our project is set back from the road, and the project maxes out at seven feet high. Okay, that's a lot less than a lot of buildings. So, the opponents here have provided their testimony and a lot of their own results. And so, we can go back and forth and say whose results work, work best here. But here's the reality on the ground. Operational track record in North Carolina is stellar. Over seven hundred utility-scale solar PV systems, and PV system, solar utility systems are defined as two megawatts or over, have been installed in North Carolina, and no systematic breakdowns or shutdowns due to technical, environmental, or regulatory issues have been reported to the Chief Oversight Group Department, which is the N.C. Department of Environmental Quality. So, as been cited tonight, and I was surprised it was cited by one of the opponents, the Regulatory Oversight Group is the N.C. DEQ, and they have by law managed a utility-scale solar management program, which includes disposal of panels, the decommissioning, and I've got to keep saying this decommissioning thing, because they think that we're going to get away with not paying the bills. If we, we have to decommission, we have bonds, or we have letters of credit, and so we are obligated here. We also have to, we talked about hazardous wave material management and environmental contamination protocols. So, the other thing that was mentioned is financial well-being. Guess what? If we don't find, if we don't pass that financial well-being, then we have no project. So, I don't know what everybody's worrying about here. We are so regulated. Also, this department, under their Division of Energy, Minerals, and Land Resources, manages the, the stormwater permits themselves. In addition to all that, we have to receive a certificate of public convenience and necessity, which requires the energy sales plan, as well as a full list of federal and state permits to operate and construct the project, or construct and operate. Turning to the county, in our formal re- zoning application, we have provided our plan to meet all the requirements, including setback requirements, landscaping, and no demand on water or sewage. And as you've already heard, I have been talking to and actually partnering with Sunraise Farms to put in agricultural use component. And what they are going to do is they're going to help us consult on the management, where the panels are set, as well as where the sheep will lie, as well as install a, in a long-term vegetation management program. Of course, they'll, they'll provide us with sheep as well. Think about this. This is enhancing not taking away farmland, where farmland didn't exist before. And people talk about restoring the soil, people talk about species being in the area, this, this deals with, and again, I mean, not everybody in our opposition, our farmers, and farming is a big component of RA, isn't it? And if everybody thinks this is some sort of gimmick, it's a long-term serious commitment with significant costs and oversight. So, the project is safe according to seven hundred projects in the state, it is stringently regulated, is consistent with land use policy, is beneficial to the community. And so, the opposition, if they were really honest about this whole thing, everything set down, not in my backyard. And I understand that. I understand not in my backyard. But the landowner has testified that they have the right to use their land. And in this country, landowners generally have what they call bundle of sticks, the right to use the land, the right to exclude others, the right to sell, release, and the right to develop within legal limits. They've also talked about the real consequences to themselves and the community if this project doesn't go forward. So, finally, I wanted to state one thing, and, and it just seems to me that the opposition here, very well organized, even have their own T-shirts. But as a vocal opposition group, they feel they have the right to say, to tell the landowner how to, what to do with theirs land. And I also, I think is already stated, they may allude to this, they represent, they're formidable, they represent some of this community, but they do not represent all of the community. I have talked to people, people have visited me on site while I was taking pictures and talked to me about the land. The landowners have talked to neighbors, they've talked to community people, and you've heard from these people as well. So, please, even though these people are concerned citizens, they have a right to speak up, and they have, they have brought their own statistics, they do not represent the entire community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Any questions, comments, or anything from either board?
I need some minutes if I can. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to first say thank you for coming. You know, you, we live in a constitutional republic in this country, and this is an example of what the nation ought to be able to do. Neighbors, friends, family, come together, agree, disagree, whatever. I'm elected in Irelde County by two hundred thousand people to represent you and do what we think is best based on the options we have before us. I'm a District Twelve Director for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. I represent eight counties, over two million people. And I'm going to say this up front to everybody on both sides. What I'm going to say, I don't mean to be condescending, and I'm not trying to be a smartass, but I'm going to be honest with you. So, I'm going to tell, I'm going to recap what I heard and what I think we're coming While the rights of the land use people and the family are very honorable, we agree, that's tough decisions we have. But Mr. Littman, when you say the vocal opposition have no right to their opinion, I'll disagree because when you, everybody I've heard tonight, from everybody sitting here that has a financial gain in this situation, I've heard you say financial well-being. I've heard you say it's, it's safe, reliable, regulated, beneficial. All those can be true at the same time. I've never one time heard anybody, including the banker, say it's profitable. So, without government subsidies subsidizing this situation, we wouldn't be here, because in my opinion, Energy United, the bank, my question to the banker, and it's rhetorical, if sixty-six percent of the energy is solar in our country, and it's so great, and it's so profitable, I never, I never heard him say profitable. The reason that the banks are all on board for it is because everybody's tax dollars is paying for it, or the majority of it. So, there's less, there is less, there is less and less investment risk from these businesses and yourself, these investors, while everything you're doing is very honorable. And I agree, we have to look at solar situations. I've been elected, I'm the senior commissioner on this board, and I serve over two million people in, in this district that I serve. I still think there are other options that's better, potentially rooftops, other things you could look at instead of taking up what I'm going to say viable land. In my opinion, this does not meet our Horizon Plan, because it says that this plan is to keep this, this area in its farming operations, large rural residential, all kinds of character that it has, okay? So, I'm going to say, everybody sitting in this whole building tonight has valid concerns, there's risk involved, there's investments involved, but the majority of the, the risk involves a taxpayer in, in America, because these are federal and state subsidies that are subsidizing this. And to the family members, I think if you come to your community, the people that's called me on your behalf, most have been very respectful, and, and people are emotional, so I understand. I want you to maintain your family property if that's your will. But I think if you go to your community, if the main focus of this is to raise revenue to pay your taxes that we're required to do a revale for, they're not absorbent, we live in a number-two county in the state of North Carolina, and I'm going to say the best county in the state, maybe one of the best counties in the country, because we wouldn't have the growth we have here if it wasn't a damn good place to live. The agriculture, the, the diversity, all of those things make us in North Carolina a top state in the country and a top county. So, what makes us great is we, the people, elect representatives like us to make the best decisions we can. My favorite saying is, "Before you judge my actions, ask me my options." My options here is to try and help the property owner as best I can without negatively impacting the other citizens in Irelde County. And my responsibility is not to, to look out for the investment companies, whether that's Energy United, all those. I agree with all the things looking at energy solutions, the energy companies, the manager and I were talking earlier, about the energy companies are required to do some of this type of alternative, energy, excuse me, energy and things like that. But, but why don't the companies invest in this? Not the taxpayers of, of America, at, at least eighty percent in some other dis-situations. So, I'm going to say I respect what everybody has said on both sides. Everybody's got valid points. We don't have any hard proof of what negative impact this, if approved, would be or not compared to something else we did. But what we go on in real time is resistance from our taxpayers in our county that elect us to be here. And, you know, I think that if you give everybody due respect in this room and in this county and this country, to have an ability and agreement to agree sometimes and disagree. The people that spoke, the gentleman spoke there, I don't know your name, and I'm not calling you out to be mean, clean energy, conservative values, clean energy options, we need them, agree with you. Let the companies invest in that, not the taxpayers of America subsidizing it. There's no risk to the companies, or, or minimal risk because of the subsidies that, that President Trump is trying to do away with. The gentleman that spoke may have misquoted some of the facts. Everybody here probably bloviated a little bit to get their point of view across, and, and we get that. But the lady from, from Chapel Hill or whatever, you know, I heard reliable and safe and regulated and all that, never at any time, but nobody here tonight said profitable. Nobody said profitable. So, we wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't for the taxpayers of America. And so, everybody in this room, whether you agree or not agree, I appreciate your investments, your company's investment, I'm a business owner, but every dollar I've ever spent in my business, I borrowed and paid it back. The other people in this room didn't do nothing but call me to do business with them, and that's how I paid my bills. I didn't impose my wishes to take care of my business and my viability by negatively impacting my neighbors I live with in this country or this county. And I don't mean that to be mean, I'm just pointing out where, what I see as facts, pros and cons. And so, for me, it don't meet the land use plan. I think there's other options to help you if, if your main goal is to be able to viably pay for the taxes on that property annually. You've got a lot of people in this room, I think, could come to a barbecue or spaghetti dinner or something if that's an option to help you pay them taxes. Because the people that spoke about your, your grandmother, your mama, whomever, sister, them people apparently loved her because they knowed her. So, I'm just saying there's other options for solar, there's other options for energy, there's other options to help you take care of your property without negatively impacting these other people in this county. And I'm just pointing out those things as elected official, that's my job to point out the pros and cons. You know, safe, reliable, all the things is true, everybody said hypothetically, everybody, that's true. It don't meet what I think our plan is for that area. There's other options, in my opinion, and it wouldn't be viable if it wasn't for the subsidies coming from the government. And so, everybody in this room and everybody in this country has an opinion, including yourself. I appreciate every business owner investing anything they do, our farmers, everybody. We got to help everybody, we don't have food, we ain't going to be here. We don't have clean water, we're not going to be here. We make the best decisions we can of the facts in front of us. But for me, there's other options to help that family without negatively impacting these other people. And so, that's where I'm at. My job is to tell you where I'm at and why I'm there, and it's, and, and this is my opinion, I pointed out the pros and cons of both sides. Everybody's got valid points. But the biggest thing I hear tonight is if it wasn't for government subsidies, we wouldn't be here. And the banks and everybody else wouldn't be as interested if it wasn't backed by the government, because they're relying on the businesses to pay that note back, and ain't nothing they can go after collateral-wise other than some empty land and some solar panels that ain't going to be worth a damn if you resell them. So, with all due respect to everybody, that's where I'm at. And I'll let my colleagues comment, but some of the main points of our Twenty Forty-five, you know, the areas are intended to maintain character, large rural open spaces, farms, farming operations, large lot rural residential uses. The goals and policies of the Twenty Forty-five is to preserve, protect, and agriculture, rural land use, and in some cases, there are exceptions we make to our Twenty Forty-five looking at all the circumstances that we have at the time. But I'll, but I'll just say, in my opinion, this doesn't meet that exception for me. And I want to say again, I thank you all for coming, with all due respect, everybody had great points, I might be disrespectful to nobody that commented on your position, your position, yours, whatever. But you guys are all have, have something to gain on the backside of taxpayers in the country. And if it wasn't subsidized, I don't think you'd be here, because I don't think these businesses would be investing in something that ain't got a return, return better than what it does. That's my opinion. I appreciate you all coming, and that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Vice Chair, you got anything?
There was only one thing that I can think above and beyond what Commissioner Hough was stating. You had a slideshow at the beginning, there was a question I had had, can you pull that PowerPoint back up? Not Jake, it wasn't yours, it was the other one. And I didn't, I didn't see a number on the pages for the slideshows, but I can reference to you that it was a slide immediately prior to the one that said community benefits. So, if you can find the one that says community benefits, go to the one right before it.
Does community benefits, the one right before is partnership excellence?
Does "Community Benefits," the one right before is "Partnership Excellence"?
That's it. There was a dollar figure on there that, there was some...
$3.59?
There, you looking at?
Thank you, now I can see it better. I wasn't sure the clear, I was not clear on that when we were going through that, the finance for impact. The 23-year solar experience by off Main Street Power, I don't know, it's, um, I know it's a bullet point for the presentation, but I wasn't sure how it was directed for, for this project. Was that for this project, or was it just an over?
I, I think, yeah, I think what it was, is we've heard from the same person who put out all these statistics, financial statistics from the, in the last hearing, and we wanted to point out what kind of backing we actually have. Because the credibility of our company was being questioned from a financial point of view. And that was one of our responses from a bullet point. So that said, it had nothing to do with this specific, specific project, yes.
All right, that's what I was clearing up. That's all I had, thank you.
Commissioner Stroud, you got anything?
Well, he wanted me to go after him. He, he likes to be last. You know, I'm, I'm going to refer to the gentleman, the very large gentleman in the region.
You want me to go up here, by the way?
You know, I appreciate what you said, because it's, uh, you're, you're right, it's a hard decision for us to make. And you said you didn't want to make that decision, and, and that's why we're elected. We, we have to make decisions, we're not, we don't win either way. We go out here, one side's mad, other side's happy, vice versa. We do this every week. I, I disagree with some of the stuff on this side, I disagree with some of the stuff on this side. You know, I, I travel, I travel all over the world, and I can see, uh, you know, I've been in some countries that hate solar, absolutely hate it, and tell us, you know, reasons why. But, uh, but you know, I'm, I'm a firm believer that we could, there's a time and a place to make it work and to get, uh, to, to work like sheep, and, and I even saw one farm had chickens in them. But, uh, you know, we have a reason we believe in it. Uh, and there's a reason, you know, I'm a firm believer, I'm, I'm a very large farmer in this county. I, I think that we should have our choice to sell our land as, uh, as we should, but in, in the same aspect, you know, we've talked about this, if you had a church and somebody bought the lot, the lot right beside and wound up a bar, would you not want us to be able to make a decision whether you can put that bar beside that church, or a strip joint, or something? Something that, there's a reason we're here. There's five of us, we don't always agree, we don't always agree with the planning board. The planning board is there to bring stuff to us, and they do, they do a very good job. And I can tell you, the, the one gentleman, you have no idea, Mr. Holland does a great job. I appreciate him, appreciate what he brings to us. We don't always agree, we, we, he have disagreements, heck, most of you guys in here disagree with your wives, I'm sure, but you, but you end up going home with her. So we're here to talk and to make a decision. So I appreciate everything y'all brought this night. Like I said, I, some of the stuff I don't believe, some of the stuff I don't believe, some of the stuff I'm impressed with, you know, I didn't know so many stuff. But I have done my homework, he and I've talked about a lot of things in other countries, because he travels a lot too. And, and we've checked other countries and talked to them about this stuff that's been doing solar for a lot longer than the United States. So there's a reason we have opinions, and there's a reason there's five of us. Gene, I appreciate what you said, that's probably the best speech you ever gave. But, uh, but, but we do, we, we, we don't take this lightly, I promise you, we don't. Sir, you, you hit it right on the head, I appreciate what you said. When you walked away, I thought, that young man's going to be something when he gets older, even though you're just 27 now, but wait till you get as old as me. But, uh, but no, we, we appreciate both sides, and, and we, it's, this is, it's not easy. Of course, it's because they pay us so much, the reason we do this, but, uh, and, and if y'all guys have no idea how much time it takes, I mean, we've been here since, I got here at 3:30, I don't know about the rest of y'all, but I think everyone was here about 3:30 today. And, uh, and I started at 3:30 this morning, so that's why y'all might see me yawning up here. But it's not easy. But we do appreciate everybody coming, and we appreciate your concerns. It's all up to you.
Three and a half, four years ago, when I decided to retire from the second time, first, most know, I retired from the United States Army, retired as the Director of Veteran Services. After another 20-plus years, I decided I was going to go to my little farm in northern Iroh County, raise few cattle, make a little bit of hay, and sit down. As my wife says many times, "Men plan, God laughs." As I looked at that year of 22, 22, of that election, I looked, there was 11 Republicans running for, 10 running, and I didn't see three names that I could support, so I said I had to sit down, shut up, or stand up and speak up. I think we all have, whether it's our father, our brother, our best friend, we have a confidant that we talk to, that we bounce ideas off. And I, there's a gentleman who is old enough to be my dad, but I call him my older brother. I asked him about getting into this, and he's a successful businessman. He looked at me and he said, "Why in the world would you want to get in to be a county commissioner?" He said, "There'll be a day, there'll be many days, you're going to have folks that you're going to look out into that audience, and you're going to be friends, neighbors, sometimes even relatives, that you're going to be looking at, and you're going to have to make a decision." Making decisions like this is one of the hardest things we have to do. Because, first off, like I said, I've got a little farm. I raise black Angus, I make hay. I'm very big, I believe in property owner rights. I can tell you already in the business, I don't care if I want to build a new house. Do I have the right to just go build a house and not get permission from somebody? Nope. I want to put a swimming pool in. You know, in America, we have property rights, but they're not untethered. They're not, you know? So, um, I consider folks on this side, I'm personal friends with the mailers. I appreciate Trevor, you talking about the stewardship instead of the property owner rights. Trust me, I joke with my kids all the time, I ain't leaving no money. I'm going to leave them some land, but I ain't leaving no money. It's a difficult balance. Commission, uh, I, I'm going to second what Commissioner Brown said about Commissioner Howe. I think it's the best thing you've ever said. I didn't think you were capable of that yet. I, I've often joked, I, 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 one of my own children said, "Why do we have to have all this on?" Because I don't want a strip club beside Central Elementary School. Okay? So I first want to applaud every person in here who conducted themselves very professionally on both sides. I was disappointed that we questioned family members' presence or reasons of, I think it was unfair, that we questioned the integrity of someone who volunteers for board who has no power. Our planning board that voted 5 to 4 is divided some of this room, but it is an advisory board to give us input. If you'd like to serve, we've got lots of openings on boards. Sign up. If you think you'd like to, to give advice to Iroh County on a particular subject, sign I do live in the Central Trinity community. This is very personal to me. When I look and I say what I feel, I'm going to make a friend or a neighbor upset. But having said everything, Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion to deny...
I've got one more thing I would like to say before we do this, before I ask for that, please, sir. Going back on what you said, Trevor, how old's your grandmother? Oh, 90, yeah. And I, I want to go back on what Commissioner Stroud said, you know, attacking someone that cannot be here, that, that's pretty low. Attacking people on the planning board and their wives' registered deeds, that's pretty low as well. And I'll just go ahead and say that. Everybody done really well until we got to that point. So, I mean, she's been here 90 years, paid her taxes, everything she's done, and I just, I think that's, that's hitting the bottom of the barrel. So with that said, I will ask if we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to deny the rezoning map amendment and make a finding that said denial was based upon the amendment not being reasonable, nor in the public interest, and being inconsistent with 2045 Horizon Plan, specifically with the subject property located in agricultural and rural conservation Tier 1 area, and the intention and goals of the plan are to maintain the character of large rural open spaces and large lot residential uses, to allow for long-term viability of agriculture businesses, and that the plan does not support non-new, non-farm-related businesses in the area, that the primary uses are to be farming operations and single-family residence, to preserve and protect agricultural and ru- rural uses of the land in this county, which includes not just subject, uh, property, but surrounding agricultural lands, and to preserve the rural character visible from public roads in areas that's, such as the area of northern Iroh County, um, that have a history of farming.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0 to, to not pass the rezoning request.
Mr. Chairman, I, I gotta, Chris, I want to say thank you again to everybody that came, and, and, uh, please be respectful when you leave. And can we have a five-minute break?
Yeah, we're going to take a 10.
10.
We're going to take a 10. 10-minute break. Ten-minute break. Brad and Gene, we're getting ready to start.
Thank you. Thank you. We started.
Okay, we're going to start back. This now brings us down to our administrative matters that we covered at our four o'clock pre-agenda meeting. I'll turn it over to the county manager to go over those.
Thank you. The following items, as Chair Conley said, we reviewed at the four o'clock meeting and the board agreed to place on the consent agenda. We had a request from emergency management for approval of statewide mutual aid agreement, a request from emergency management for approval of a three-year agreement with Viasy to provide virtual emergency operations center platform and authorize the county manager to sign. A request from EMS to apply for a grant for the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. This will be during the cycle that opens up in October. A request from emergency medical services to provide the physical agility testing to revise the physical ability testing policy. A request from the library to approve budget amendment number one to accept a LSTA scholarship grant in the amount of $1,775 from the State Library of North Carolina and amend the budget. There was a request from the purchasing division to declare a surplus, to declare for surplus and approval of private sale of a K-9 unit. This is a K-9 that's 11 years old, that is no longer able to perform its duties. A request from the finance department for approval of a three-year contract with debt book for debt management software and to authorize the county manager to sign the agreement. A request from emergency communications for approval of a PSAP funding agreement for the Statesville and Mooresville Police Departments to authorize the county manager to sign, and this is a two-year agreement for 911 fund allocations. A request from human resources to add a position title to the pay and classification schedule, and this is basically taking a vacant part-time EMT position and reclassifying that and adding a part-time logistics tech to that pay. It is not a new position, it is reclassifying a part-time EMT and turning it into a logistics tech. A request from administration to renew the lease with the North Carolina Department of Public Safety Division of Juvenile Justice and authorize the county manager to sign, and this is for the space that Government Center sell. A request from tax administration for approval of the June 2025 releases and refunds. A request from administration to select a voting delegate for the NCACC Annual Conference. The primary voting delegate will be Commissioner Haupt, and the alternate will be Commissioner Brown. The county construction updates, that was reviewed for informational purposes only. And there was a request from administration to approve the minutes from the February 6, 2025 winter retreat and the May 20th, June 3rd, and June 17th, 2025 Board of Commissioner meetings. The final item, there was a request to call for a public hearing on August 5, 2025 for a potential economic development incentive for Project ACE 25.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have a motion to approve the pre-agenda consent administrative matters? Motion by Commissioner Brown, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are passed. They all passed. Brings us down to the announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. I'll turn it back over to the county manager to go over those.
Thank you, Chair Conley. We do have several vacancies to announce. We have six appointments with Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, one appointment with the Animal Grievance Committee, three appointments with Central Atlanta Aging Advisory Committee, Region F, four appointments with the Farmland Preservation Board, one appointment with Mooresville Planning Board, which is an ETJ member, two appointments with Mooresville Board of Adjustment, which is also ETJ members, six appointments Nursing Home Advisory Committee, one alternate appointment for the Trauma Planning Board, which is an ETJ member, one appointment for the Statesville Board of Adjustment, which is also an ETJ member, and two appointments for the Lake Norman Marine Commission, and this is in anticipation of the commission being reconstituted.
And while you're on the roll, brings us to the appointments, boards and commissions, and we have a few for tonight.
Absolutely. We do have two appointments for the Animal Grievance Committee. Justin Benfield and Amy Miller currently serve, and they have both agreed to serve again.
Make a motion to support their willingness to serve again for the Animal Grievance Committee.
Motion by Vice Chair Neder, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved.
For the Aridale County Planning Board, we have three appointments. Lisa Meyer, Doug Holland, and Jerry Santoni. All three of those members are currently serving in that capacity and have agreed to serve again.
I'll make a motion, we continue to...
All three.
...them serve.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved.
Juvenile Crime Prevention Committee, we have five appointments. We have Kerry Netzou, Deborah Brown, James Mixon, Jennifer Kilby, and Mark Vaughn. All of those are currently serving and have agreed to serve again. We did have one additional applicant. Go ahead and submit an application, and we did want to make the board aware of that if there are any additional openings with JCPC, and this is Eric Babbitt, that is the new Director of Safety and Wellness for Mooresville Grade School, has expressed interest in serving. So, but those five individuals are currently serving with JCPC and have all volunteered to serve again.
Make a motion, we approve the five reserving and ask that if there are vacancy opens up, if John could keep Mr. Babbitt's application on hand, let him be on deck.
Motion by Commissioner Haupt, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved.
The last one is the Farmland Preservation Board. We have one appointment, and Ken Robertson is currently serving, and he has agreed to serve again.
I make a motion to reappoint Ken Robertson to the Farmland Preservation Board.
Motion by Commissioner Stroud, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? He is approved.
And I'll just say, this speaks volumes to individuals that are currently serving and willing to serve again, and we appreciate them being willing to serve again. I think you've seen tonight, public service is not always easy, so we appreciate those that are willing to step up and do that.
Amen.
John, do you mind, Mr. Chairman, can John, for the ones that we're going to do next meeting, can he get us that information out if we don't have everybody willing to reserve and if we have new applicants? And did you, I apologize if I missed it, if I did, did you add the Statesville?
I did.
Okay.
Statesville Board of Adjustment, one appointment for an ETJ member.
Thank you, I missed that.
Any unfinished business? Public comment period is tonight, no one has signed up. I will open up the public comment period, ask if anyone here would like to speak. Hearing none and seeing none, I'll close the public comment period. Commissioner updates. Commissioner Brown, you got anything?
After tonight? No, I got nothing really.
Mr. Stroud.
Kind of what I said already, I was a little very disappointed that some people chose to make some personal attacks. The other that I wished I had said and needs to be addressed is, there was someone who also mentioned that due process not working. I think due process worked tonight.
Yes.
It was a process, this has been coming. I know we have been accused several times of us doing something wrong. This is the first time this has come before this board for us to make a decision. We've done nothing wrong, the whole process worked. To have one of our advisory board members attacked, you know, folks don't get it. That process worked. He made a recommendation. I don't know what else to say to people. So, but I'm very thankful, people that were respectful, but those that chose to be ugly. You know, as my mama used to say, "God's watching."
Vice Chair.
I don't have anything to say.
Couple things, just want to say, again, I'm proud of everybody that showed up. I think the process works. Everybody has different opinions, it makes them different, not wrong. And my favorite saying that we live by is, before they judge our actions, ask us our options. I think our options were spelled out, and we did what we thought was right within the law. And I wanted to also thank Beth and John and the IT people. We had a District 12, for the NCACC District 12 meeting on June 24th. They helped us connect, and it went well. John communicated with all the relevant counties. I appreciate what they do. And Beth and Rodney supported Kent Green. He was our initiative from our president from the NCACC, is heroic hands, where they recognize local heroes in emergency services. Kent Green was my nominee, and he spoke to the district meeting, and there'll be a presentation at some point that they will give him a trophy or a plaque, something from the NCACC. But I wanted us to again thank all of our various staffs that impact the citizens directly or indirectly every day, and all of our emergency services people. I said it in the beginning, the prayer for elected officials, public servants, emergency services people, our citizens. None of these jobs are easy, you know, but I appreciate people trusting us to make these decisions. I think tonight is an example people could use nationwide of how you can come together as a community and voice your opinion and disagree, and go home, drink coffee, have a barbecue, and not hate each other. So, I think it all worked.
Anyone have any new business? County managers report.
Bless you. Just to let everyone know that our new ADA accessible entrance is now open, so that will, the ramp, the temporary ramp should be leaving tomorrow, and that new entrance is open, so.
This afternoon, actually at four o'clock, which is a long time ago, we had two actions taken. The first one's Attorney-client 143 318 11A3 for the purpose of discussing litigation, Aridale County versus Sandos Incorporated for opioid litigation. I'll ask, do we have a motion from that?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve the settlement with Sandos Inc. to resolve pending opioid-related litigation and authorize the county manager and/or finance director to execute the necessary documentation, including but not limited to the required participation agreement.
Motion by Commissioner Haupt, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our next item was Economic Development, General Statute 143 318 11A4. And do we have a motion on that?
Yes. Out of closed session, I'd like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on August 5, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. regarding a maximum economic development incentive of $313,643 over a five-year period for Project Carbon, based on a $25 million investment in Aridale County.
Motion by Vice Chair Neder, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. We had two more with no action taken, Personnel 143 318 11A6 and Property Acquisition, North Carolina General Statute 143 318 11A5. It brings us down to the end of tonight's meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Haupt, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.